What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session and today we have a very special guest. Uh, most of us here know you already Matt, but uh, do you want to introduce yourself a little bit?
Wow, I've had to do an introduction in a long time. Um, yeah, my name is Matt, I'm one of the coaches here for poker coaching, um, been doing this for like fifteen years now. Uh, a lot online, a lot of live poker. Play all different stakes, so that kind of experience and everything and uh, yeah. Cool.
Hi Matt.
Thanks for, yeah.
Hey, how's it going?
Good to have you.
Alright, so let's go ahead and get our first question part away. Uh, what are the most important heuristics to use when you're playing on poker man?
I was looking, so what exactly you looking like, it's obviously like a pretty broad question, but in terms of like, like heuristics towards what like?
So I, I think what the question means, like what we were trying to mean by the question is like, when you are approaching the game from a theoretical standpoint, what kind of generalizing shortcuts do you use when playing and which ones do you think are kind of the most important? Does that make a little more?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, so like I briefly, like I kind of went through these questions a lot and I think this is gonna kind of apply to a lot of the questions this answer. And so it will kind of be a theme maybe, um. When I'm like playing, I'm not thinking about uh, like Sims or anything like that. What I'm doing is like applying different patterns and different like types of things I've learned. Um, to play the hand the best I can. And so for example, like, um, bluffing with like king nine before I bluff with king queen, like using different patterns and like those types of heuristics and applying them the best I can. So uh, the most important ones, uh, I think it's more so just like keeping track of your range. And so one of the big things that I'm still working on um, and consistently work on that a lot of people don't is a lot of people like to work backwards in hands. So they get to the river and then they like face this tough decision and they work backwards to try to figure out like what hands make sense versus, um, it makes it's a lot easier and it makes it, it makes it a lot easier if you work as you go. So like if you're calling a flop bet, just thinking like, well, I'm calling with all three pairs. I have some like naked ace of spades, king of spades hands, if it's like two spades up on the board. Various gut shots, et cetera. And then the turn is, you know, if it turns a break, well, it's like, okay, well, all my worst hands are like these one spade hands and gut shots. Or if the turn is a spade, then it's like, okay, all my one spade hands and flush draws all improved. So like keeping track of like what hands improve and what hands don't improve on various cards, I think is like really important and helps you keep track of, you know, what hands do you need to bluff in spots, what hands um, you check like what hands should be folded first in different spots. I think that's like a lot of while I'm playing, um, a really big focus um, in, in real time.
I like that, I, I like that uh, that approach. You know, it's one of those things like I've never personally put like a lot of thought through, thought to through that lens. Um, yeah, I think, I think that's pretty stellar.
Yeah, I think that's, and it's, it's really, really, really hard to retrain your mind if you've been, um, so like it's really, like when I'm playing live, I really focus on that because it's a lot easier, um, playing one table. Um, but in terms of like online, normally you only have like two hands kind of going on. And so uh, sometimes you do have to work backwards, but normally it like, I kind of use that as a, if there's spots where I'm just getting completely lost, it's probably a sign like playing too many tables and stuff, so, right?
Alright, another question we were kind of wondering, uh, how does your thought process work when you're adjusting like from a GTO solution to like various different like player types? So for example, let me show you a sim real quick. We pick a simple one. Uh, this is cutoff versus a big blind, ace ten, eight board. Uh, this is our strategy as a big blind facing a five, uh, facing a two big blind bet basically. So how do you adjust, for example, against like a guy who's very netty?
Um, on the flop, I really don't make many adjustments because like everyone is like, even if the player was really tight, like everyone's just betting range on this flop. It's like, they're like ace high, I raise on the button or the cutoff or whatever like, um. I think like turns and rivers are kind of more so where I make most of my adjustments. Um, the, the flop like ranges are so wide that, um, not sure like how much like actual need for adjustments there are, um.
Are you gonna go for all the, like, for example, here, you, you seem to be check raising like top pair based on the value of your kicker. Are you gonna pick like every?
Okay, so I was really confused at first there. I'm like, how are we folding ace jack? Cause blue is normally the fold. This is the weirdest color scheme ever. Um, so I, yeah, I like to check raise. Um, I would definitely like be check raising like ace jack for sure, like a hundred percent. Probably ace nine as well. And the main reason is, is because if the player is really tight, they're not gonna barrel the turn enough. And so a lot of these like check raises I still make because people don't put enough money into the, on the turn. So against a player like that, like I might like check raise, check turn some with like top pair.
Okay, what about the ace seven or ace six?
Um, those ones I'm, uh, I normally don't kind of, so like, I like to like keep things kind of basic while I'm playing. And so like my always like my kind of basic rule is like, oh, I'll check raise like top pair with the kicker above like bottom pair, second pair type of thing. So like ace nine is kind of always my like really easy one. And I don't really worry about finding the ace seven or ace six or ace five and stuff in game that much.
Okay.
Um, that's kind of like, like, so like again, like heuristics, like I'm just going with ones that are very, very, um, predictable and like easy to apply in game and that I like know well. And so like, kind of like here, like on ace ten eight, it's like ace nine is always kind of the one that wants to check raise a lot because ace seven, it's a decent chance your kicker is not gonna play. And the only reason like, like the solver is kind of doing that a lot, I think it's just to have more like two pair coverage. Cause you see like ace seven, ace six, ace five, ace four, ace three, all have a little bit. It's just to have like two pair coverage throughout, which isn't really like, you're not gonna get exploited about that at all. I'm not worried about that.
Okay, and then you don't really make uh, like other adjustments, like you don't check raise more against lose aggressive players, for example?
Um, check raising, I think has to do a lot more with how they respond to the check raise and how often they three bet the flop versus, um, like if they're loose or tight, which kind of sounds like weird, but like being loose or tight can just mean they raise a lot of hands pre-flop. Or they like, a lot of people like, population does not three bet the flop very much. Like if you like go to the check raise here, like make it seven and a half. But like this flop probably doesn't have much three betting on it. Cause it's like an ace high flop, but there's gonna be some like, like when you check raise here, like how many people are four betting ace jack on the flop?
Not me.
Like almost no one is.
No.
Like almost no, like people are just calling with ace queen or a lot of people just call with ace king. And so it's like, when you check grace here, it's like a lot of your EV comes from like seeing another card. And so if they're not like four betting those hands, you pretty much always get to see the next card.
Okay, so you make most of your adjustments on the turn basically?
Yeah, I, I think the flop is like the street like, it, so let me, let me rephrase this, like it's easier to make adjustments with ranges when ranges get tighter. It's kind of hard to make adjustments when ranges are really wide. Is I guess the, the basic part of it. It's, it's really hard to make adjustments when ranges are wide. It's, that's when you can like easily make like exploits is like, once you get to the river, once you get to the turns when they're like double barreling pretty tight and stuff like that, like that's when you can make adjustments. But uh, the flops I play, you know, pretty like, even if a player doesn't bluff much, like they still see about the flop a lot and stuff.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think that makes good sense. Like, uh, I mean typically, especially in the online landscape, uh, the, the, the C bet small in position from the steel facing the blinds, I think is pretty, you could say common knowledge at this point.
Yeah, it's like, what are you gonna adjust? Like, right, like it's just like, people are trying to get to like, they think they know more than they do in terms of trying to make adjustments in like that type of a, a frame, I think.
Right, I, I, yeah, I can understand that. Where as opposed to like on later streets, you're gonna, it's gonna take a more studied player to maybe find the double and triple off situations. Um, so you know, you can, like you said, the trees get smaller, you're gonna get uh, more honest responses, the deeper you get in the pond per se.
So I don't think a ton about like, does this player like bluff a lot or not bluff a lot? I think a lot more about, um, how easy is it for this player to bluff or how easy is it for them not to bluff? So for example, like you have this five of hearts turn and let's say you get like a deuce river, like players, whether they should bluff them or not, it's very easy to find the like king, queen, king, jack, queen, jack, jack nine, like there's a lot of very easy bluffs to find. Versus if you put a queen on the river and they triple off, now what bluffs is it easy to find?
Well, it's a, it's a pretty strong equity completer for, um, you know.
So like, I'll stop you even before you like there, like what hands do they have that are not pairs to bluff with?
Yeah, I mean, nine, nine X, I guess.
Uh, king nine, like it has to be like king four suited, king nine, like it become now it's become this, so this is what I'm talking, like where I'm like going to, uh, like, yeah, it's like they have to have double barrel, king four, king five, king three, king deuce. The fricking pocket threes, pocket fours, like all this type of stuff. It's really difficult to find the bluffs versus like, it's pretty easy for even like a player that doesn't bluff much to find queen jack to triple off with here, if, if the queen jack doesn't get there, for example. And so, um, that's kind of the way I think about bluff catching and like value to bluff ratios essentially. And also too, like, people aren't, um, people only think about the bluffing side of it, like this player doesn't bluff enough. I'm like, it's probably true. So even take this spot on the three. And like, I feel get used to this color schemes, purple's all in, but also if they're not bluffing enough, okay? Which we could probably agree, they're probably not triple barreling enough. They're probably not shoving ace nine here. They're probably not shoving ace seven. They're probably not shoving ace six, ace five. Like a lot of people won't even shove ace jack here. So what does that do now? Like the, it's, it's, it's a ratio of value to bluffs. It's not, uh, do they bluff game? And so if they don't value that, they can't bluff. And so, um, it's also like, I don't think people think about that enough either.
Alright.
So I think it's really important to think about, like, when they check back ace jack here, I just actually start calling them more on the river, which sounds counterintuitive. But it's because now they're not value betting, so they don't get bluffs. If, if they're not shoving like on this three, if they don't shove with ace jack, now you start calling when they shove. Because they don't have enough value bets and it's easy enough to find like queen, jack, jack nine, king, jack, all these types of hands.
Right, so you kind of navigate your and adjust your river calls based on their ability to value.
Yeah, it's very interesting. So if the guy doesn't value that often enough, that means he can't have enough bluff?
And then it becomes like, there's weird things then about like, it might become better to uh, call the river bet with like ten X than it does like ace five or like sorry, like ace seven. Hmm. Because like, if they're not value betting ace jack, their value range is probably like ace ten, pocket tens, those types of hands. Right. So it, it gets into like weird type of things there, but I don't think people think about that enough about like, if they don't value that, like they also just don't get a bluff.
Yep, their, their range construction, how they're kind of, uh.
Very int- very interesting. Uh, we wanted to know, how do you use tools like shark scope to make adjustments when you play online poker?
Hmm, not very much, a little bit, uh, but like.
Do you adjust your strategy against the big winners, against the big losers?
Uh, we are. Not like a ton, like just because like I normally don't have time to like search it up, look it up and stuff. Like sometimes at the beginning of my session, when I just have a, a couple of tables, I'll start labeling people in my biggest buy-in stuff. Um, but like my tags and stuff are, you know, very, very simple. And then like, um, just playing more hands against the players that are losers, I guess would be more so. Um, I guess that would be um, part of it.
So like the root of this question was co- coming from a place essentially with our tagging system, I, I think. So like, uh, a big way I used to use shark scope personally was, you know, I would shark scope the people um, at my table when I would get deeper. And then I would associate their tags based off of their winnings, which, um, I've kind of moved away from that strategy just because I, I don't know how reliable that is. And we were kind of curious on your take with that. Um, obviously like if someone's been losing for the duration of their online playing, um, yeah, playing pots with them in profitable situations makes a lot of sense, but, um.
And then calling those that are like big winners a little bit more because you know that they have a bit more bluff than your average opponent?
Right, or taking a more theory-based approach versus them, you know, like giving.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's kind of like when someone's like graph is like straight down, or like if they're losers, like I probably call them a lot more though too on the river. Like it's kind of those players are tend to be able to find probably more loose gambler types. So, um, but in general, like, I put little stock into that, um, gotcha, kind of just still focused on my game. It's just like, it's, it's still just like data that's pretty hard to make an adjustment on. Um, you probably do make small little adjustments on it, sure. But um, I'd more just focus on like, if I had twenty hands and they're playing sixty percent hands, like I think that's more valuable than what their shark scope graph looks like, even if it's only twenty hands.
Do you, do you make adjustments that early on after twenty hands?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Okay.
It's like, if they're, if they're raising like, um, you know, fifty percent of hands after twenty hands, it's still like, it has to be a pretty big statistical anomaly for them to like not be over raising. Yeah, like, if you, if you would run the variance calculator on someone who's supposed to be raising like twenty-five percent of hands and they're raising fifty percent over twenty, it's like probably like, I'm throwing a number out of my ass here, but it's probably ninety-five percent of the time they're, they, if you run the simulator, like those stats expanded out over a hundred thousand hands, like.
Yeah, the line is gonna be not, not looking good, right?
It's probably after ten hands, you could probably start to make that, like it's gonna be like a statistical anomaly.
How about, yeah. How about ABI, Matt?
Um, well, I'll use ABI a little bit more like later on, like if it's a hundred dollar final table and they're playing for ten dollars, or if it's like, you know, a final table with twenty thousand up top and they have a twenty dollar average buying, like, sure, like, um, I'll make a little, like, they're probably not gonna pull the trigger as much, but, um, these are all things where it's, I still almost like focus a ton on like, kind of my game, like a little bit. And I focus less on other people's games and I focus like until I have like information kind of. And so like, I, I make adjustments and stuff like based off of like population tendencies or just spots like, like we're saying like, oh, when the queen gets there on that ace ten eight board, it's really hard to find bluffs versus when it doesn't get there. It's easier to find bluffs, you know, or like, what's their value range there? Like there's, like, are they value betting enough? Those types of things are like, um, I'm just drawing from like my experience of playing, you know, hundreds of thousands of hands of what I see. Uh, until like I have like concrete type of information. Um, I think kind of like digging into this type of stuff while there is probably a little bit of edge to get like, not much. Uh, if you're, if you're spending too much time on it, it can probably be more of a distraction than anything else.
Okay, very nice.
So like, all I basically do is like, I should like, I just copy paste the stats when I have time and like to my highest buy-in tables, like I'll, 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 like, for example, when I was playing the venom and stuff, like I'm just like, marking players as I can essentially. And I just have like, I have like a whale, fish, like bad reg, break, like a, like whatever reg and then like good reg. Those are like this, like tags I have. That's as simple as my, my tagging system is.
Okay, uh, do you make adjustment based on the buying level you're gonna play? And if so, what kind?
Um, yes and no. I mean, like, probably get away with playing more hands at lower buy-ins. You're not gonna get like, you know, exposed as much for that. Um, you're gonna have a lot more weaker players, which leads to playing more hands. So you're not gonna get squeezed as much. You're gonna, you're gonna realize more equity in, in spots, so. Um, definitely, uh, that, um, I make more adjustments based on like, is it the reentry period or not? Like that type of stuff, I think is kind of important. Um, but still just focus on like, and then like, I still just focus on just playing my game a lot and, um, in terms of like, trying to think like, it's hard when you're not playing in terms of like, I'm sure I do make adjustments on the buying level and I'm like going back and thinking now, um, just like I might be a little more, um, casual with entering pots at like lower buy-ins, I would think, then, um, mostly due to probably, um, getting squeezed and stuff like that. But in general, with like, online, like I'm gonna have stats or at least some hands on like how much people are three betting behind me, which has to do more so with like, am I gonna like enter the pot behind me? Like how often am I gonna get squeezed? That type of stuff. So like I'm more so just like looking at the stats of the players behind me and like who opened, rather than what the buy, like I'm not actually like, looking at what the buy-in of the tournament is. Like I'm playing thirty dollar tournaments, so like two hundreds every night. And so I'm not really looking that much if it's a thirty dollar tournament or a two hundred dollar tournament. I'm more just looking at like, who are the players? Okay. Um, left act and what, what are the stats and stuff? And like, what should I be doing in the spot a lot of the time?
Okay, and, and if somebody's listening here and he's playing small stakes, what do you think he should focus on the most?
Uh, just work relentlessly on the fundamentals. So like pre-flop, flop play, don't focus on like fancy stuff, like learn how to check raise effectively. Learn how to, um, play from the big blind, learn how to play from the button and, um, just like continue to build on the fundamentals and the really, really high frequency situations. So buttons, small blind, big blind and like playing flops, playing turns from those, um, positions.
Okay, uh, and do you make any adjustment when you play like the top ten of your buy-ins?
Um, not too much, like, like I said, mostly has to do with just like I'm playing, uh, what the, uh, like, who are the players? Yeah, I mean, it's like, I'm looking at the stats the players have and stuff. And you know, if it's a site where I don't have a HUD, I'm just playing my own game at that point. And so it's kind of, uh, um, I always said like, people always ask me like for the main event, like world series poker, like main event, they're like, oh, what adjustments you make for the main event? And it's like, I don't make any adjustments. And like I play, why would I wanna make adjustments from the game that I've been working on for the whole year for this tournament? Why am I gonna make adjustments for like the most important tournament? So like the analogy I know is like, stick for like, I'm American, there's not all Americans on here, but like for the NFL, like if you're a running team and you make it to the Super Bowl, your team just runs the ball, runs the ball and plays defense. Why are you all gonna sudden like gonna change your game and start trying to throw the ball in the Super Bowl?
Now you keep the same strategy and you put it forward.
Yeah, exactly. That, that's kind of my thoughts on it. There's different, differing thoughts on the main event, um, but like, yeah, I think people go into this, the main event with like a really, really poor mindset in terms of that. They try to do too many different things rather than just play their own game.
What about live tournaments in general, like with more bad regs and fish, like you don't alter your strategy really?
I do, but I'm altering the strategy for like against those players. I'm not altering the strategy for, um, like the tournament per se, where like, oh, like I don't wanna bust out earlier, any of that type of stuff. So, um, like, yeah, players are like, gonna let me realize more equity, then I can play more hands. If they're not gonna squeeze enough, then I can flat call more. So it's like, uh, those types of adjustments that I will make like in game, once, uh, you know, I start to get a feel for the table and how players are playing. But like, it's a lot of like, um, yeah, so like a, the big one probably is you can flat call more if people aren't gonna squeeze enough, which is often the case. Um, in general, like in live tournaments, like, um, I tend to adjust to a, I don't do much flat calling from like middle position in a way. I tend to play like a, a three better or fold strategy. Like especially early on and the main reason is to avoid like five and six way pots. So, um, I'll just tighten up a little bit and just play a three better fold strategy, some of the times at some tables, because when you flat, you end up going like four ways. And you're often gonna be out of position now because people call too wide. Um, and so I kind of feel sometimes the squeeze or fold strategy, especially because people don't four bet enough, works really, really well in, um, some of these live tournaments early on. That's not like a specific, you know, uh, main event or high buy-in type of adjustment, but that's an adjustment like I'm playing a sixteen hundred at the win. And I'll probably be doing that early on in the tournament to avoid like some of these four and five way pots, be doing like a lot of three betting, um, and in those types of spots and then flattening a lot more from like the button and cutoff.
With like no information, are you like over folding to check raises, for example, in a, in a live tournament as well, just based off player pool tendencies?
Uh, it depends on like, as a broad answer, if you already give it, like, yes. Uh, but it depends a lot on like board texture, like I'm not gonna fold a lot on like a nine high board, but like on an ace high board, I probably will.
We've got, yeah, we've got a question actually specifically geared for three bets coming up.
Yeah, what are the best exploits today that people are missing in their games according to you, Matt?
Um, I don't know if it's like exploits, but like people don't, well, it's more things that this like people don't do that they should do, like people aren't check raising enough and then people don't three bet the flop enough versus check raise. So, um, I guess to go on that, um, one of the exploits, I tend to do a decent amount of, like everyone's slow play is way too much in position. And so like, you can take this various ways, like there's a lot of times where I'm like going for value on like flop and turn, like say out of position, they go call, call. And their ranges get really strong really quickly because they don't raise ever. They, they just always just call their strong hands to like keep your bluffs in. And there's times where I'll just go for a check fold on the river with some pretty strong hands because they don't value that thin enough and they, um, their ranges end up being too strong. Um, similarly like, I could make a check raise. Um, like we can use this ace ten eight, for example, um, with like, let's say like I check raise ace nine. And they call and then determine, maybe I put some bet out there. They call like, I might just check fold the river because they are basically like, they love to slow play in these spots and their range, like they don't value that thin. And it's just your, your, the hands turning into like a straight bluff catcher on the river. Like, so basically after they make like two consecutive calls, their ranges get way too strong. So they, they don't, um, they, um.
They don't raise enough on the turn.
Yeah, like for example, like they're gonna have, they're gonna have all those ace, kings, ace, queens, ace jacks on the, the turn, like they're never raising those hands.
And they're not raising against the check raise as well.
Yeah, exactly. Like, so they, they arrive at the turn with those hands. So, um, like, um, ace nine, I might like check raise, check or something like that.
So you can check raise a flop, blast the turn and then check fold the river.
Like, I've done that for sure.
Okay.
Um, it's, it gets a little weird where it's like, I'm not sure like what the exact way to exploit that is where like, I'm, I'm assuming it's like you do a lot more check raise, check when they, um, but like, you get to like your, 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 I don't, the adjustment might not even be much because basically your, your gut shots and your bluffs realize more equity. And your value hands get less equity, like they, they don't get enough money into the pot. So like you make less money with your value hands, but you make more money with your bluffs. So it's still kind of like probably balances out in the end. It's just what hands you're making money with is shifting in that case. But in general, like people do not three bet the flop enough, um, at all. Um, and so that leads to realizing more equity with your bluffs and it hurts your value hands a little bit for sure.
Okay. Okay. Now, here's one of our uh like beliefs around here, uh, do you think we should fold against three bets spray flop uh versus population? Uh, since we think they do not bluff enough.
Um. Overfall again. Probably sure, like, probably for sure, but I think kind of the days are over where like. I don't know if there's really. Anyone that's just like three betting like queens, kings, aces, ace king anymore, like. Even like live, like I have a player label that's pretty tight, like they three bet in a spot and they showed up with like ace ten offsuit. And stuff like people kinda know now that they should three bet with some non-premium hands. And they do are gonna show up a boss very much, but as a general rule, yes, like I am folding a lot more of the. Closer hands to three bets and also I'm like. Now, like a lot of stuff has come out with like, you know, when does ICM start to kick in, um, you know? And a lot of these like very close EV spots become pretty bad, pretty uh like quickly, so.
Precisely about like these hands that are zero EV that sometimes flicking a call, flicking a fold. All the bottom of the range, our guess is that if people don't find all of these, they might find one or two every now and then, but. They don't find half of these in general and you're defending. The the range you should be ra- defending, you're gonna lose EV for sure, no?
Yeah, I would agree with that, um, for sure, I also agree a little bit that like, I mean, like that's a hundred percent like a true statement. But I feel like go back to the three betting range, like it's also too like they don't three bet as thin for value, like they're not three betting like tens and sevens and nines and eights and stuff like that and. But but as a general rule, yes, I'm over folding the bottom of the range, so a good way to think about like exploits. Like a really good way to think about is what what's the cost of this? So like I'll ask you now, like what's the cost of folding all these like point one and even like. Even like a hand like nine eight suited, that's point zero seven, like what's the cost of over folding these hands?
Probably not zero.
Well, no, I mean like what's the um.
You don't get to see a flop.
That like I I'm trying to ask the question to get the answer I want, but it's not, I'm I'm asking the question wrong.
Are you tight, it's it, are you trying to get at like you're tightening your range and you're kind of incentivizing them to play more aggressively into you?
Yeah, so it's like the cost is allowing them to three bet you more.
Right.
And it's you have to ask yourself, is that like an expensive cost here?
No, because they already don't do it enough.
Yeah, so if that's the case, then yeah, for sure, that's like a good, like the cost is not worth it, so I use that analysis in a lot of spots. So what's the cost to folding to this check raise? So you asked me that earlier. Like, what's the cost of folding like, like I fold the top pair of tech check raises like a decent amount in certain spots? Like, what's the cost to doing that? It's well, are you like? They should be check raising you more and like deciding is that cost like, what's the the cost of that here? You know what I mean?
So I guess, so I guess um, what I run into a lot is you get a real tight player and they don't. Free, they three bet, but they don't free bet the correct sizing, so you get sucked into calling.
Those are, those are the things that tilt me the most.
Yeah, so you get sucked into calling that three bet just because of the sizing. Even though you know they got a very strong hand.
Yeah, so like in those situations, like I've actually like ran some stuff where it's like. You start calling, like you still call a lot with the hands that can out flop like aces and kings and stuff, like suited connectors and pairs. And those types of hands and you start folding like ace queen, like even like ace queen suited and stuff. And then, and then um, you overfold the flop a lot. You massively overfold the flop.
So like, yeah, so you got nine, ten suited, let's say, and then you flop top pair tens, you're gonna fold that at this.
Yeah, yeah, like you, if the flop comes like ten, five, three rainbow, like and they bet like half pot, you can just like fold. Feel like, say like forty big blinds effective after they three bet stuff, like that's not the type of um situation.
Very interesting.
So I've done a little bit of work on that, but not a ton, um, it's actually probably a good like webinar thing to work on.
Have you seen that become more prevalent uh in the game lately or just a more consistent micro three bets?
Hmm.
Especially on.
Um, I don't think so.
I'm I'm seeing it more, like I had uh like a guy, the dog three bet with queen ten. You know, that used to always be aces is now is now queen ten, you know, I I've seen that, I've had that happen to me quite a bit. In the so smaller stakes.
Hmm.
All right, now, do you use a lot of node locking when you study or do you prefer to use that uh to use the original sim?
Uh, I do almost no node locking, um, partly because. I suck at it and never could figure out a hundred percent how to do it, and also too like, I also part of it is like, it's. I think really hard to effectively probably do it well, because one node lock like and then the sim's gonna auto adjust. And then it's like not gonna be accurate again, and so like it's pretty hard to just like. Node lock one part of the tree without no locking every part of the tree effectively, um. So it's something that I've never like really.
Okay.
Dug into that much, so it's not something that I specialize in or am. Good at at all, I'm not saying it's not worthwhile or anything, I'm sure it is worthwhile, it's just something that I've never really um dug into too much.
So for like, for like a comment on that, um, probably better for more sweeping simplified adjustments than really like. Trying to pinpoint things though, just because of um, the difficulty of uh doing that accurately.
Yeah, yeah, like I've done like very simple stuff where like. So for example, like one of the ones that I I I like is really good, like say the flop is like ace eight, three rainbow and. You uh, so it's like normally just like a range bet small imposition, but if you like reduce their check raising range by like half. It basically shifts now to like. Like, yeah, so like check. And like, so, they, yeah, bet two or bet whatever, like. Essentially now, if they aren't check raising, like. All these like six, five suited, like if you reduce their check raising range by half, essentially with like ace jack. Like have them uh go back to the cutoff strategy. Like you'll just shift to like betting like seven point six with like the ace king, the ace queen, the ace jack, and you'll never bet small.
Hmm.
Because you're not like a lot of the value, some of the, a lot of the value that comes from those hands is getting check raised by worse hands, and if that's not happening enough, you're not getting enough money into the pot.
So since they don't check raise enough, we should work on bigger sizings?
Uh, you end up like going bigger with like the more polar party range kind of, yeah.
Yeah, he he's just using that as an example that he's done before.
Okay, because we have another question related to that later.
Yeah.
Uh, when you're playing online poker, what criteria do you consider for game selection? Do you look at the size of the field, the format, the side, late registration sta- strategy?
Yeah, so I spent a lot of time kind of thinking about this and I recently kind of like. The start of the year kinda was like, um, I've made a lot of adjustments to what my schedule is online and. It involves a lot of, like a lot of my volume has shifted from ACR to. Bet online, global, WSOP, um, and really focusing on. Entering tournaments with like massive edges and like a lot of the like, you know. Two fifteens on ACR and stuff like, yeah, I'm winning in them, but they are really big fields with. High variance and the ROI's are like fine, but not very good versus I can play a. Um, fifty dollar hundred person tournament on global where I'm probably winning like seventy percent. Um, like there's being, I thi- I think a big part of online poker is. Putting yourself in really, really good positions in terms of high EV tournaments. And you really can like start to control um. A lot of the variants a lot more.
Okay.
And so I've done a lot, I've I've learned a lot recently from like um. Beef is and so that he's been around for years and he's never played high stakes and he just kind of grinds out all these like. Forties to like hundreds and stuff of just like. Super, super high EV type of tournaments and like doing this for a couple of months is like. The. Especially like on sites with some smaller fields and stuff like, it's really like. Good mindset where you're just kinda just making two final tables every single night, like if you're playing thirty tournaments a night and they're all hundred person tournaments like. It's kinda hard to go more than like two days or three days without like a final table and uh just kind of. Not like chasing, I I think this is like a big, big thing with uh people is they love to chase, they always look at what first place is. Which has very um. I don't wanna say has very little to do with their ROI, but people way overestimate what it has to do with their ROI. Especially because in these big first places, they're often unlimited reentry. And really large fields, which means really high variance and uh lower ROI's and so uh. Focusing more on really, really um. Um, so example, like one of the tournaments, like I kind of like have almost stopped playing is the um. The the Sunday special on ACR, I only play the the ten thirty AM Pacific ones, like the Sunday special one is like. At least for me, like my ROI has been awful in that and it's such a fast structure. Uh, in that tournament, like there's not a ton of like. It's a really big field, obviously, and it's like a two hundred K, but it's a really, really. Deep unlimited reentry uh where like every pro is playing it and like swapping that out for like. Um, like a fifty dollar twenty five K on bet online that runs in the morning or something like that. So for me, it's like I have a set number of tables I play, so it's normally like. I'm trying to reduce tables, that's like another thing about it, so like nine tables, and so basically just trying to put myself in the nine best tournaments I can.
So to uh expand on that. You're talking about like the uh, the two fifteen on ACR or the, wh- which tournament do you say you removed?
Well, the big deals, the.
Like the Sunday special, like the two, the the two fifteen, Sunday special where like, I'll play like the ten thirty one that has. Better structure, better structure on it, but like, like a lot of these two fifteens on ACR, like the ROI's I don't think are that great on them. Um, and so it's like, I'd rather put myself in a tournament with like a, so like, for example, like. That two fifteen, let's say I have a twenty percent ROI in it. I can play a fifty five, for like a fifty five, I need to have like an eighty percent ROI in it type of thing, like it's just, it's a um. Um. It's, I'm trying to think of it the best way, i- it's 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 a cost analysis basically like that. And then it's a, well, what are the bankroll requirements then when you're playing a fifty dollar tournament where let's say I you have a sixty percent ROI? Versus a two fifteen tournament where you have a twenty percent ROI. Like, then it, then it starts to like, you start to think about, well, what's the variance of like, you know? It's a like a big, big difference on your variance in terms of that, like ROI has like the biggest influence on your variance. So if you're choosing games where you know you have like a massive edge in terms of ROI, um, that's one gonna help um. Reduce your variance and also then start with that focus and stop focusing on like what first place is. And start just, just churning out like, um, you know. Um, like what beef is, beef is kinda says, this is a graph that goes straight up into the right, like kind of, it it's it's. Pretty good, uh, like mindset, I've enjoyed it a lot more since I've kind of shifted down from playing like chasing every single big field um. Uh, ACR versus just kind of uh.
The small week games.
Yeah, exactly.
I've uh, I've recently made that adjustment in my game too, um, I I think I watched that webinar you're talking about. He was mentioning being a more effective CEO of uh your online schedule, I think is how he was describing it. And um, I I've been doing a lot more uh bet online volume as well and it's been, it's been good for my mental.
I mean, I've been playing on there always, it's like, like on global poker, I'm beating the one tens for fifty five percent. Yeah, it's over, over like, over a thousand games.
So I got a quick follow-up. I I uh recently switched to global too and like you said, you don't really adjust your game the way you play based on the field. But I found that I play way differently on global than I did on ACR. Cause it's such a different game, so are you not really making that many adjustments?
Um. Yes and no, like it's harder to make adjustments there because you don't have uh.
A HUD.
The like a HUD, so in that mind, I think it's harder to make adjustments, like I would say the general player on global is less aggressive. Um, and so it's just more important there to pay attention and like take notes at showdowns. When that come up and then make adjustments from there, but um, in terms of like. I tend to like play my game until otherwise, but um. But yeah, like I I would say for sure the 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 general player there is for sure less aggressive.
All right, uh, when you're looking at uh pre-solve ICM models, for example, like those on pre-flop academy. Do you make any adjustments from these charts or you use them kind of as is?
Uh, big thing here, so I don't do any copying with ICM models, so so when studying ICM. It's all about learning and understanding the um, the the topics. Cause in ICM, there's like almost no two situations that are ever the same. And so you really just have to understand the concept so you can apply them very well in game, and so. When you're looking at like pre-solve like ICM models and stuff, like no one's playing accordingly. And so it's about understanding like why things are happening so that you can make uh the proper adjustments. Um, in terms of. These uh like charts that you're looking at, so for example, like. There's a lot of spots where like you should be like flooding queens and jacks and stuff, so so one of the things with ICM, like especially the final tables. Um, I actually end up four bet shoving really, really, really wide at final tables. And the main reason is is because I think three people like just assume, like especially against like chip leaders. Because they just assume they can play every single hand and assume they can three bet everything and they end up like. Just having way out of rack whack like bluff to value ratios, um, three betting in these spots, and so I end up like four bet jamming a decent amount of final tables. Um, and they also like open way too wide, so like I end up three betting quite wide against um. Um, like chip leaders.
Okay.
And so it's it's more so about like understanding what's going on and what should be going on and uh. Thinking about like how spots are supposed to work and then just kind of using logic from there, but uh like blindly following them is like. Never a good option, even like whether it's ICM or not, like blindly following these, um, you know.
Okay, yeah, sure.
I focus like a lot on studying GTO off the table, but like I'm rarely actually. Thinking about it while I'm playing, whether it's ICM or not, I'm just like playing poker kind of at that point. And so I'm using like as like a guide to study and then when I'm playing, I'm like. And they like, this is probably pretty important, like in all situations, just um, I'm playing poker. Like I'm not really like, I'm not playing GTO or anything, I'm just playing poker when I'm playing poker, not, I'm not thinking about like. MDF, like I'm not thinking about what percentage of my range any full, like I I am like a little bit like that's ingrained in my thought process, but like it's um. I'm going through my my standardized like kind of thought process and how I make decisions at that point.
Okay, uh, when you plug your hand into HRC uh and you're looking at the results, um. Like Ben CB said that uh you should probably look at the rule of like the value of aces and then. Uh, take the value of like ten percent of what aces gives in EV. Or in um basically an ICM value, and that this is basically the range you should never really mess with. And then whatever is outside of that range can be adjusted based on your player, and what do you think about that kind of suggestion?
Sure, seems reasonable, I mean like I use it a little bit, it kind of as, i- it's just kind of a baseline to value. Sure, seems reasonable, I mean like I use it a little bit, it kind of as it it's just kind of a baseline to value. What does point oh three mean, what does point, you know, six mean, what is point like, they're all relative numbers. And so you need something to compare them to and so aces is a good hand to compare it to, cause that's the most money you can make in the spot. So that's kind of what the thinking of is of that, like ten percent of aces rule, that's you know um. It's just because you want to compare to something and so the most money you can make. Is a decent starting point, I think, and um yeah, I I think it's.
Okay.
I mean, it probably could be proved wrong with it, probably be proved right, but I think it's a reasonable, like it makes sense to me.
Yeah, sure, uh on the flop, um when you're deep stacked, like uh G T O solution will often like size up. Uh based on like the flop texture, your hand strain, uh do you think there's a lot of E V to gain that like a mixed size on the floor?
Uh yes and no, if you're like, it it's these types of things I would uh. For sure, apply to like. I'm trying to think how I want to answer it um.
Okay, well, let me continue the the question.
Yeah.
Uh like we believe that population overfold to big bets. And then a large backing stable, we have friends over there, they they suggest that since population is never balancing enough bluff. When they use the big side, they tell their backies to just fold to the big bets.
Uh I would agree with the third point that people tend to, it's easier to find the big, the value bets for the big bets, a little bit harder to find the bluffs, so. Um I agree with the third part part for sure.
Yeah.
Uh the second part. I don't have a strong opinion on, it's probably true that they overfold the big bets um.
So if you're putting your value into your big bet portion, I mean, it's you're kind of like getting exploited against like. A lot of players, if you see what I mean.
Yeah, like uh this is why I get um. Cautious with like exploits sometimes, because it's like, there's always like normally a pretty easy, like is there an easy counter argument to that? And like this is a pretty like easy counter argument to that um. On when like, I think there is E V into it and so it essentially like if population is over folding the big bets. Essentially, then your bluffs, you should just make that bluff more.
Yeah, 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 that that that's what we're basically doing.
Yeah, yeah, and like even if you have your value bets in there, like you're gonna make the same amount of money. It's just your bluster, you're gonna make more, your vibrates, you make less, like you could start to value that smaller there, but it's like more so they're they're they're. Folding like the middle in parts of your range, so like if you beg that like ace queen on a side flop, like they're not folding an ace to one bet. So it's um, you know, we're kind of, you can kind of go down a rabbit hole of like what people are thinking and stuff like that. Um I still always believe kind of it's it's. People overestimate how much they understand what another person's thinking. In a lot of spots, especially online where you have like. You don't know if this person's just has a, you know, a whiskey in front of them, you don't know if this person has fif- fifteen tables. If they have one table and they're playing on the couch, like you don't know any of this stuff, so it's kind of hard to uh. Over it, I think people overestimate their ability to understand what someone is thinking in these types of spots.
Okay, uh here of the study session, we will often advocate like uh for a strategy for when you three bet, you should. Probably see better range on most of the the scenarios, how important is it to have a checking range and three bet box from out of position?
Um. So you really like the big blind and the small blind?
Yeah.
The small blind probably uh. Like if you, if you look at an aggregate report from the small blind, it's pretty easy to know which flops to check, cause it's just the low boards, so like you're more linear. It's me like seven high, eight high, six high, so there it there's um. A couple of different ways again to think about this and it kind of again goes down the rabbit hole of exploits of like. What are the counter arguments, so the like on like a seven high board, it's like the reason you're checking is you have too much off to Broadway and all this type of stuff. And also if you check, the imposition player is supposed to bet a bunch and then you can put in a check raise um with certain parts of your range, so. But also if you just see bet everything, like they probably overfold to your C bet. And so um I still like having both options because they overfold the C bets and also like. People play really badly against like check raises in these types of situation, um so it's. Not gonna say like, like it's player dependent, like I like to use like the float bet stat a lot. Um I had that on my HUD, so how often they float that, so how often they're betting versus a check. Um is like a pretty important stat like this and then like I would just use the, well, what's their fold to see bet stat type of thing. Um but as like a general like simplified rule. You're probably not giving up much by just see betting range from out of position for a small sizing. Um I I I would find it hard to see you're giving up a ton of E V even there and then just working from there, like you're gonna end up having to check the turn more often. Would be the cost, um which is costs and benefits that, but um I think there's. People already play like bad enough in position where I still like to have a checking range um on like the low boards in those spots. But um you're probably not giving up much at all, having a just a uh C bet range strategy like.
So to expand upon that real quick, uh just briefly, like um our general strategy is kind of based off low and high cards. So like the low boards, I think uh there's usually a pretty strong um agreeance, you know. We're consistent on checking some of those, but often we'll be running um a trainer simulation and we'll get a a board like. I don't know, um ace king king and um. It'll often be said like is is an obvious, you know, bet large spot or half pep, half pot bet when in actuality. Um the solver on some of these high card textures is playing.
Ace king, ace queen, a lot of that stuff, it checks a lot.
Yeah, it's playing very slowly um uh. Especially at these like really volatile S P Rs, like at forty in a three bet pot, so um. What what are your opinions on balancing out the strategies in those scenarios?
So I guess like the counter for me, like the way to think about it then would be like to ask you. So Galen, why why do you think the solvers check it a lot on those boards, so like Louis, Louis pull up like a. I don't know, like an ace king king board, like you said, I'm like small blind or something. Sure, small blind three bet.
Small blind versus button, I think is gonna be good.
Fine, yeah, cut off, same thing.
So it'd be like ace king king rainbows.
Yeah, it's gonna check a decent amount and why is it checking a lot?
Well, so like, my thoughts with this are that we're in a three bet pot. Um forty big blinds effective, so you don't need all three streets to get all the chips in. And you have this, your three bet range has this board so locked up that um. Essentially, his range is gonna need some help sometime to catch up.
Yep, uh I agree with all that, that's for sure, it's like it, the board is, it's it's the board is very, very static. And so that's number one, and number two is like your bluffs have very little to no equity on this board. So you have a lot of hands that don't want to put a lot, so it has to do more so with like jack nine of diamonds. Is basically drawing dead when it gets called.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
And so you have a lot of these hands that just don't want to put. A lot of money into the pot because they have such little equity and also. The cutoff has really good board coverage here, the cutoff has a ton of a sex, the cutoff has a ton of king X, we do as well. And so basically like, if you bet small, like if you bet here, you're gonna end up like. Narrowing the range to a really, really strong range where it's still really hard for you to like, let's say you have ace queen and you bet and they call, it's like. You're not really comfortable going for three streets either way.
Well, you've kind of put yourself in a bad position, like if they're calling, I mean, you you're almost like in bluff catcher mode at this point.
Exactly, so it's kind of like, that's that's like answering your question kind of there, I feel like of like. It's more about understanding why the strategy is doing it rather than what's going on. And so that's kind of what's going on here is because of you're out of position and. You don't want to just be bloating this pot with hands with like zero equity. And so you have enough hands like jack ten, queen ten, like yeah, those hands have equity, but they're also like. Potentially drawing dead if against like boat out, say like king queen or king ten or king jack, you know, when they make a straight. For example, you're not even happy to put a shit ton of money into the pot, um you you're basically. On this stack of a board, it's just you have too many hands out of position that have very little to no equity to be driving in that much money into the pot.
Okay, so if we were gonna generalize it, i- it's kind of a function of the locked up equity in a lot of ways.
Yeah, and you have too many hands that are struggling to um. They don't have like a good equity profile for.
Yeah, the ranges are just the haves and the have nots at this point.
So essentially it goes back to like, I always say in a lot of spots like. It's cheaper to like overfold the flop than it is cheaper to overfold the turn or the river. And in this spot, then if you just bet range here, you're gonna end up over folding the turn a lot.
Fair, yeah, yeah, that's true, okay.
Alright, do you have the time for a few more questions now?
Yeah, 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 we're good.
Okay, uh well, we noticed that uh on I C M final table. Whenever you're facing R F I and you have like a hand like a nine, they have a nine or an eight and you're against late position, it's bad. So for example, you're on the.
Uh real quick, Louis, sorry, you skipped uh the one about the G G rollback, which I actually wanted to touch on.
Yeah, we can go back to it uh. On G G poker, um the final table has a blind rollback, I don't know if you're familiar with that. So what that does is that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm a little bit familiar with it, it's been a long time since I played on G G, but yeah.
Okay, and then also there's a rollback effect and there's a massive pageum usually between tenth and ninth, like it's usually two weeks the money. And then, how do you think these uh elements of the game should impact like uh your final table strat? Final two table strategy, cause if you steal a pot right before the rollback, like the pot you sold is like five times bigger.
Um. I wouldn't think about it that way, I don't, I could be wrong, but like thinking about it as stealing a pot is it, it's five times bigger, I don't think. Applies, cause it's more just the chips, so it's like, doesn't matter if the final table, the blinds are five, ten or five hundred, a thousand. It's the same chip stack for everyone.
I think the uh the interesting idea behind this was and where like the root of this question comes from is. Okay, like if the chip average is somewhere like around fifteen to twenty, um the rollback will be quite large. So the value, the the risk reward profile has essentially increased, so like. You can only wager two big blinds as a minimum, but if the bubble was to pop next hand, that wagers actual like. Value is closer to opening a pot for six big blinds and the chips that you would win. Is closer to like thirteen big blinds or something, does that make kind of sense?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense, like I understand that um. However, like when you're calculating I C M values, it has nothing to do with what the blinds are. It it has to do with like chip stacks and the total chips in play, essentially in reassigning those two and uh. It basically what the I C M model does is it takes the total chips in place, takes the percentage of chips that each player has. And then assigns the probability of finishing in each position based on those chips. So they, in any I C M calculations or anything, the blinds aren't calculated into it. Now, like this does bring like, I could see this bringing. E V in terms of like, if you make it to the final table, people are gonna bust out too quickly and they can. And so like there's some E V in terms of that, um I think the bigger adjustment is you have two kind of like, that's more difficult. Is you have two kind of things working against each other, um like one is you're at one of the highest. Um like I C M points of the tournament where like boss busting out is very, very costly. But two, you also have a, you're playing assuming with a very, very big Annie five handed. Um at least in live, you'd be playing with a full big blind Annie, I don't know how G G does it on these. And so like that's gonna make like the biggest adjustment is like, what is the Annie here five handed?
Mm hmm.
Um and so. Without thinking too much about it, like and I haven't studied this, cause I don't play on G G. Um and so like, I would kind of play. Still my game, but I'm sure there's probably is a decent amount, like I'm sure there's some adjustments, but I would just be guessing if uh. I would just be guessing here if I was gonna try to do it, I I honestly don't know, like those are just my thoughts off the top of my head on it, but um. I don't know, what are your guys' thoughts, like I'm I'm happy to hear anything, cause that like I don't have a ton of, I haven't thought about it really ever.
Well, okay, so I was, it was an intriguing question to me when um it was kind of explained to me how that scenario is. So I've played with H R C a little bit and like adjusted like the opening sizes and. And things like this to try to like model it and I I've I've failed up to this point, really like I.
I don't know how you can model that in a in in H R C at all, so like that's the thing, it's like it's pretty hard to model.
Well, so what I was doing was I was adjusting the opening sizes, so instead of like making a standard open two big blinds, I was making it like five or something. But.
So that's where like, that's where like, again, like I explained, like where I disagree because the I C M model really doesn't consider what the blinds are.
Yeah, that's fair.
Um. Cause like the risk premiums are gonna be, yeah, so.
Sorry, th- there's just so much more playability on a final table after the rollback to where in in my mind that it's. Each pot you lose is detrimental and each pot you win is such significant E V um.
Yeah, we think there's something to it, but it's tough.
So if I can define it in different terms, and sorry for my baby over here, um like Matt saying, I think I agree with you that the I C M model doesn't care. Cause it cares what percentage of chips you have in play, um but the question is about future game, you know, like do you want to go against this, you know, table of nine? With fifteen big blind stacks, what's that look like, what's your edge, how do they play, do they make big mistakes, do they actually end up playing kind of okay? Um versus, do you want to play with them at forty, same questions, do they actually kind of play well there, do they play really badly? Um and I don't really have clear answers on that, I think that's the question that I want to ask.
That and then the other, but the other thing is, is like both of those, like you're set, you you you're. Once you're making that decision, you're openly accepting to sacrifice current E V for potential future E V that you may not get.
Yeah.
That would be my like counter argument to that, um. And so it's kind of like, and again, it's like, okay, every chip you win is worth way more. Or do you save the chips for that, like, I don't know enough, so I would just play how I would normally play, but um, yeah, I don't really.
Uh we were wondering, uh we picked up a few patterns uh for I C M final table strategy, for example. When you face R F I from late position and you have a nine or an eight in your hands, bad. When you face R F I from an early position and you have a jack right then in your hand, it's bad. Give you an example, under the gun open final table, you're looking at jacked and suited from the cutoff. So this is a spot where G P V, you know, kind of have to do something. But at I C M, the fact you have a jack and a ten, you block both. The bottom of the opening range from under the gun, so it's really bad, you're just gonna fold pre flop. Uh have you seen similar patterns on I C M points for the final table like these?
Um. I could be wrong, but like I think a lot of the reason you're folding Jack ten suited there isn't because of necessarily like. The blockers are bad, it's more so, so, so in I C M, what essentially was happening is like you have a risk premium on your head. Obviously, and so the E V of calling goes down tremendously. And so you end up on a lot of situations where you do more three betting than calling. Because the E V of calling has gone down quite a bit and. With Jack ten suited, like the E V of like three betting in that hand isn't very good because it doesn't have an ace or a king in it. So you end up wanting a three bet hands, obviously that block the four bet range, which can be more a sex and king X heavy um. I'd be careful with um. So like if ranges get wider or bad blockers changing or just expanding. It's as ranges get wider, blockers become less important, because as they get wider, the it's just. A blocker removes less and less of the like good hands and so a blocker becomes less valuable. As ranges get wider and that's like, I we kind of touched on that earlier with like. Wide ranges on the flop versus tight ranges on the river when we're making adjustments, uh like when I make my exploits. Like that's like kind of the same situation there, cause it's really hard to make adjustments when um. Ranges are really, really uh wide, so it has to do more in terms of just the E V of like, we're not doing much calling in those spots versus um. Three betting, I would think, um but as Rangers getting wider, it's like blockers just become less valuable.
Okay.
That's for sure true.
How do you deal with like super aggressive four bet strategies that often appear like on I C M models? Like those king five suited all in versus three bets?
Um, well, I think I kind of touched on that a little bit earlier. I think like people don't do that. And so, yeah, they're in the models. But like, I just don't think they also like, they're never, they don't execute those hands. Um and so um it's more so like what I want to take away with a model from that is like, what's going on? What types of hands do you want to be four bet shoving? What types of hands are good for it? It's in the the I C M models, I think what the most important part is like, what's what should be like the optimal like value to three bet bluff ratios, et cetera? Like what hands should they be value three betting and go with it? And what percentage of hands is that? And what like, how many bluffs can those uh hands handle? You know, that's I think what's kind of gets really important at these I C M pre-flop stuff. When you get into like pre-flop I C M stuff, it it turns into a lot into a ratio game of like having the correct ratios of value to bluff in these like three bet, four bet games. And that's like what really, really drives your strategy.
Okay.
And what drives your exploits? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Um quick question about the final table. You know, there's that that old rule that says when you're at the final table, you could, as the big stack, you kind of want to keep the short stack alive when you got four left to bully the middle stacks. Is it, is it, is it the thing or is it not a thing?
I mean, yeah, I've so I've heard of it and like, to be honest, I haven't done a lot of study to to know if it's an actual thing or not. Um
Have you, have you looked a little bit at uh multi-way post-flop strategy?
Uh yeah, yeah, quite a bit.
What are the best takeaways?
Best takeaways, um so I think one of like the important things that people like like multi-way pots are just like a logic game kind of, and it's one of the things, it it really sucks to be the person stuck in the middle, is really, really important part to remember. And the person stuck in the middle often gets to fold a lot. And that's the person that's making a lot of the bigger folds, because if you have like an M D F, basically, it's always gonna put a majority of the defense strategy is gonna be put on the person that's last act. Um in terms of like, that's the person that's gonna have be having to do a lot of hero calling in spots, um not the person in the middle. And so it gets um
Guy in the middle doesn't have a much of a raising range, right?
No, normally they don't. Normally, if you are stuck in the middle with uh uncapped ranges behind you, you end up playing a call fold strategy a lot of the time, which I don't know is good. Um in theory, or not in theory, like in practice, because once it goes like bet call, like there's supposed to be like some, a lot of squeezing that goes on from the third player in the pot, similar to like pre-flop. Um and so and I really like squeezing in those spots, because um a lot of people don't call with stronger hands. And so you can kind of start to squeeze, just like you would pre-flop when someone um is squeezing. Um you know, when there's flat callers in the middle. So um three-way, sorry, it's hard to talk about these things. I I'm a, I'm a, I'm a visual person that like needs a hand in front of me and I can talk through a hand and different things, but like visually, I think it's understanding the differences between being the player in the middle and being last to act, I think is very, very important um in multi-way pots. And also recognizing bet sizing in multi-way pots and the effect of bet sizing um on M D F and the way that that ha- affects like recognizing like that uh a half pot bet and a three-way pot is like, you can almost treat that like you would like a full pot bet or even more in a heads-up pot. If you like kind of run the math on M D F frequencies, um like a half pot bet in multiways, similar to like facing a full pot bet in a heads-up pot.
Oh, very interesting.
Not exactly, like it doesn't exactly work like that, but like if you want like a little framework to think about, like i- i- it's a helpful framework in terms of how to think about things.
Okay.
Are there, are there any like general heuristics you can glean from like considering heads up? How you would play a hand heads up and then like in how it would change just a little bit with the third person in there? Or do you just use three-way tools?
Um, yeah, like you can, like, if you don't have a three-way tool, you can probably figure out some stuff like um through a heads-up stuff. And there's some spots where I'll run us, like, I'll look really quick at like G T O wizard or something at a heads-up spot, because I don't want to spend the time to run it three ways. But
So there's some general heuristics that'll probably stay the same.
I mean, it's still like poker, i- it's more uh like what's changing in a three-way pot is like the minimum defense frequency. And the main thing is like, you don't have to hero call anymore with like the bottom parts of your range in a lot of spots, because you have a third player, like it's let's say the button's betting, the small blind and the big blind are a team, and their job is to make it that they they call enough together to clear the M D F, so the button can't bet with any two cards profitably.
Right.
So that's kind of the way to go about it. Um you don't have to make like a lot of high card calls. You can start to fold a lot more like your backdoor flush draw type of hands. Um and your range has become a lot can more condensed quickly um in a three-way spot.
Okay. Very nice. Well, I think we covered all of our questions, Matt. So thank, thanks a lot for coming with us, for sharing. Do you have anything you want to add?
Um uh no, sorry, uh oh, they so um so what do you, what do you guys like, what are the main study tools you guys are using in this group?
G T O wizard.
Yep. So uh before this, what you guys were doing, uh what what spot were you guys running? Let's go through some, I want to do like
Some trainer work.
Yeah, let's do some trainer work. I have to, I have to do my warm-up anyways for my my tournament, so we can, I can do uh, I'm happy to do some trainer work for
We were doing
That we thought about for this session was to do exactly this.
I I told, I told him Matt to just run you through some trainer work, but they were like Q and A.
What tool do you use the most, Matt?
Uh probably this.
And do you use H R C a lot?
Uh I've started using it a lot, yeah.
Yeah. Do you use it to construct uh like squeeze ranges and stuff like G P V?
Um honestly, just like, cause I'm mostly using like the charts, but if I'm using, like, I would use that, for example, with like so we were talking about earlier, like what adjustments are you making to these, a small size three bet with a really tight range? So you got like two constraints, like one that makes you want to fold and one makes you want to call, right? And so like, you could run that in H R C and get a more accurate, you know, um idea. And then you could copy those ranges, put it in, you know, pile solver, run it, and then have a better idea, like and what ends up happening is you, you still call a lot, but you like fold ace queen off and you call with like six, three suited, basically. Is like what ends up happening.
Yeah, I did some of that work, actually. That's kind of what I came up with. Uh Michael Acevado actually also said, uh we had him last month. And he said versus like these micro three bets, he said we should four bet more.
Yeah, I mean, uh i- if they're not three betting, just aces, kings, queens and ace, king, yeah, like that was the example we were using in that, but yeah, uh like
It's like some of these players use, like find all the slivers and like you do them a hundred percent, but since they shouldn't be doing them a hundred percent, it seems like they just use a smaller bet size to uh widen their range.
What are you doing, Louis?
I just want to show Matt uh something.
What is this? I haven't used pre-flop academy in a long time.
Yeah, well.
I love pre-flop academy.
They have this I C M.
I I mean, like I basically unsubscribed, cause like I had ranges from three or four different sources, but
Right.
Okay, so this is something we'll do maybe once a week. Uh this is basically a final table trainer.
Is this final, this is all final table?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna train ranges.
We're squeezing here?
So do you think it's good for us to trade like this? Or with final table range with I C M ranges like that?
I mean, I guess, no, as long as you, it's more so like um so, so I saw a number, uh I'm gonna ask you guys this. When you go through G T O trainer in one hour, how many hands do you get through?
One hundred, maybe?
Okay.
No, no way.
No.
All right, how many do you think?
We, we never get through a hundred.
Maybe like three minutes each hand. Sometimes you go down a rabbit hole.
Yeah, we get through fifteen hands in fifteen minutes and then we spend fifteen minutes on one hand.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, so I end up like, I go really slow. And so, cause I'm more concerned about like, um I call.
Then we can see is
Like, I'm more concerned about like the strategy here.
Yeah, cause it's not about just the hand, it's about what your range is doing.
I'm more just concerned about like understanding the situation rather than like
Well, yeah, so honestly, when we do these trainers, we're not trying to really duplicate this. And honestly, like, they get tired of me saying it, but I'm like, I tell them all the time, like, we should be using these with a heavy grain of salt, just because it's like, some of it's a fairy tale, right?
Yeah, and it's more so like, like, so what I would be doing here is like, I'm calling with this hand, I'm trying to think like, what are the bottoms of my range? Like, what types of hands? Like, an easy question to ask here is like, so like, what's your three bet value range here? Like, that's an easy question to ask.
So like, it's gonna be suited aces, like, you're probably gonna just for value, um like
Like, cause bluffs or whatever, cause that's like based on, I always start with value, cause bluffs are based on what the value bet is, so.
So aces, kings, queens, uh jacks.
Jacks are kind of
I think Jack's flat here. I don't think, I don't, I don't think you're gonna three bet. Uh Jax actually might shove. Jax might shove and queens squeeze, that might be the case, but it's probably pretty close, like this hand calls.
How about ace king?
Ace king off shoves, ace king, ace king suited three bets.
Even queens might shove.
Yeah, so Jax call, yeah. I thought Jax maybe could shove. Cause normally it's like a general, like, good rule is like, you can normally shove the hand that's just below like your three by value range. So I was like, pretty sure we could squeeze queens, so that's why I was like, Jax might shove, but I think I said like first, I was like, call was kind of
You said call.
Yeah, like, so ace king off shoves, ace king suited, like ace queen off is kind of a weird, like, but the like, the one big thing there that like I think a lot of people miss is like ace ten off was pure fold. This is fold. Four, ooh, eh, I guess that's right, yeah.
So here you should be folding queens, ah, ha, ha, Jack.
Off, I'm never
Yeah, yeah, exactly, right?
But also too, there like, there's enough future game there with queens, like the player never has kings and aces, like, there's probably enough future game with doubling up there, you would be massive chip leader and stuff, but like, you probably shouldn't fold queens.
I'm jamming here.
Yeah.
This is, this is a rip, yeah.
You can jam.
Matt, have you seen like the low suited uh, the low suited kings, like cold four bet jams?
I three bet small here, way too much. But this is probably a fold, or it's either fold or like at some frequency, you get three bets.
I mean, uh this is, this is seventeen equal stacks, so we're gonna be pretty aggressive into this guy, because we can apply a mountain of pressure, I think.
It's probably like fifteen percent three bet, fifteen percent three bet and eighty-five percent fold. It might even be less than fifteen percent.
Five is for the wheels.
Yeah.
Globally, though, it's nine, nine point
Sorry, what was it about like suited kings?
Uh just like the three better cold four bet jams with low city kings, like after it goes bet call or something.
So I think I fold this, but
Ooh, yeah.
Uh so this is three suited kings after it goes three bet call, or was say it one more time, sorry.
Galen, do you remember the the scenarios we've seen with the suited kings, where it was just ripping in absurd spots?
Well, so some of these, when there's high I C M pressure, and it's often like spots like this, it will pull from the suited kings, targeting some of the trashy aces that are trying to see a flop. Um and like even sometimes the queens, like it just, and it won't jam like
It won't do aces, though.
It won't do aces. So like, we see weird ranges sometimes where it's like jamming all the suited kings instead of the suited aces. And um
That's interesting, like, I think it might have to be like the opening range is more ace X heavy than key X heavy.
I think that's exactly what it is.
Like, that would make some sense. Shove.
I think, yeah, I would definitely shove this.
I would just call.
No, this is shove.
Ooh. It's a call, okay, so like here, for instance, you see how like all of these suited kings and even some of the suited queens are just going bananas here?
Yeah, like the suited aces are though, too.
They are, um there are a couple scenarios that we've come across that like, some of these suited aces will actually fold. Like, eh, there, there's some weird ranges, and I think it's um
It could also be like, they didn't run it down all the way or something, but as a
If it's not that uh the suited king has the same blocker value for blocking kings as the ace X has for blocking aces. But when it gets called, it's more often has two live cards if it ends up against ace queen, whereas like when your ace X gets called, it rarely has two live cards. I've wondered if that's what's going on.
It might be.
I mean, it's more so like the ace X is more valuable when you're getting called by like kings plus versus the wider the range gets, like, that's when the suited kings become more valuable, like when they start calling off like jacks, tens, queens.
Maybe low frequency three bet, yeah.
The church?
There's a middle stack.
All in?
Yeah.
Yeah, you just ship it.
Raise.
Galen, if there were squeeze spots, maybe ace X blocks more call folds for the, for the caller.
I I think it's got, I think it's got stuff to do with that. I think it's just, so like, we were kind of touching on it earlier about like how Louis was saying nines and tens are bad. I think it's like some of these I C M sims, it's just the blocker effects are amplified, the higher the risk premium is.
It's also, I think it's more, I think you're on the right track, but I think it's more the the blocker effect. So it is driven by risk premium, but it's the call-off range that is driving the blocker effect. So it has to do with more like the, obviously, like the tighter the call-off range, the more important ace X is blocking ace, king and aces. And like having an overcard to kings is really good. What do you get called by kings? So it's like, how much of a percentage of the calling range is kings is kind of, I think, what's driving a lot of that.
Okay, yeah, that's a, that's a, yeah.
So the more, the the tighter the range, the higher percentage of times it's kings, the more often you want to have an ace. The wider the call-off range, like if it's spots with like nines and tens in it, the less value, like the less it matters having like an ace, so.
I'm folding, cause under the gun opened off ten big blinds, so it's always aces.
It's gonna, they're gonna say jam this.
Yeah, I think this is gonna fold a lot, but like, there's some jam, but like that flat is gonna have like jacks in it.
I'm scared about the flat, I'm scared about the open.
No, I'm, the the flat you should be more scared about than the, this has aces in it, for sure.
Oh.
Yeah.
Like, yeah, this range is I'm getting water.
Okay.
Or ahead of three combos of king, queen off.
Right, Matt, what is your normal pre-game warm-up?
He went to go get water.
I like a raise.
Oh.
Nope, just rip.
He'll be back, though.
King four raises.
I feel like we went by it too fast, but there was the five big blind flat earlier where we flat with queens to induce. Um I thought that one was really interesting and would love to keep an eye out for more spots like that.
That's the most professionally kind way I've ever heard someone say, slow down, please, Louis.
Do you, you guys want to do I C M or T P V?
Uh I wanna, I wanna do G T O whiz.
I kind of want to do Chipping, because I have no chance of making a final table today since
Let's go. So we're gonna check. Check, check, top card pairs. We have a hand that can lead, I think.
I think this might be okay for like uh a value bet.
A three?
He's severely capped against when he, when he misses his C bet.
Oh, right. I bet two.
Yeah, they're in rainbow nature.
You can check this a decent amount too, like the button's still gonna have some nine X and stuff, and it's kind of gonna be hard to go for two streets, a decent amount, but like betting's fine.
Yeah, this is a dynamic board.
But I think the the betting strategy should be check or bet a bit bigger, like half pot or more.
Yeah.
Small bet is not really a thing here.
Yeah, the rainbow nature of the board on the turn isn't gonna lead to a lot of natural continues, so your response should be a little polar. And we're kind of betting from the middle of our range here.
So check, 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 we value bet third pair.
Why do, why do you think, why do you think you bet here, Louis?
On the river? I would bet.
Yeah, well, I I would bet here too, and I would bet
That folding is better than check calling.
Well, when you, I think when you check, the button's gonna have a lot of bluffs, and you're gonna have a hard, harder time realizing your equity as opposed to maybe like controlling the pot with a small bet here, where you can still get like called by his bluff catchers.
Sixes.
It's more so that like, when you check here and he bets, your hand is essentially turned into the same hand as queen high.
Yeah, it's trash.
And so you'd rather check with queen high rather than sevens, which can get called by worse hands. So there's more E V in betting than when you check and face a bet and turn your hand into a bluff catcher, the E V is zero, like inherently.
Nah, very nice.
Oh, wow, I do too much bluff catching.
I like how you worded it. Pair of board, high-low combo, this would, I would always check raise here.
I, I like raising.
I'd rather have a nine ten or a jack.
Really like raising this one, yeah, I'd rather have, I think we have enough hands with a little more going on, like this is gonna raise some, but like um this is for sure, I think this raises less than half. um, this is for sure, I think this raises less than half the time, I probably just call.
Well, it's a pair of board, we have the upper, upper card, the upper dangler, like, this is a high.
No, no, I agree, I say, but I, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be a pure raise or anything, and I think it would be less than. I just think there's, we have enough interaction, we have a ton of pair of eights.
I think it's like twelve, wow, it's a lot.
Yeah, so there's still a decent amount of raising, yeah, but, yeah. Can you look at the?
Queen, queen nine will be a lot more raises probably, right? Would they be pure raises, queen, queen nine?
No, there's never, like, it's almost never gonna be pure raise on that, cuz the button has too much interaction.
So these high-low combos are getting after it quite a bit.
Yeah.
What's fold? White?
White is fold.
Yeah, white is folding.
Jesus, it's like just the opposite of what I'm used to. Like, what psychotic person came up with this, Louis?
Louis?
Like, this is.
Canadian.
This is like actually psychotic.
I know, I wanted to, like, register a weird thing with the GTO wizard sim here, um, these two check raise sizes that are so close to each other, um, uh, like, Matt, are you using two sizes here? Like, like they are? I, I think it's bizarre.
Yeah, it's just like how the sim was run, like, I'm always just gonna have one size.
Poor choice, like, I would, if I was gonna do like.
See, I would have raised more with like ten-four suited, I would have chosen to raise like ten-four suited a lot more than King four.
Well, the one thing I noticed, like, on pair boards, the upper danglers, like, King here.
Yeah, 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 so having an overcard, like, but having a ten is pretty comparable to having a king, cuz like, when you call, they're like, most common hands can be like a pair of eights, so like, you have an overcard to.
Right.
Eight, either way, um, but like, yeah, like, I'm not surprised at all that, like, King four suited, like, checkers, like, these amount, like, I wouldn't have folded it, but, um, yeah, I'm probably calling with it a little bit too much, for sure.
You say you prefer the ten cuz no matter what, uh, folds, it was beating you?
Uh, no, just like having the extra equity of like the backdoor straight draw.
Yeah, it, it chooses a smaller size when you have a king with a nine, a ten or a jack, cuz you're gonna be able to barrel more often. And the King four benefits with the bigger size because it generates more fold.
So we went with check raise small, uh.
We wanna hit it here, I think we really wanna hit it.
I'm going small.
Going seven or eleven.
I like half pot.
I feel like we, like, overall, I feel like our range checks a lot on this card, um, obviously, this combo kinda wants to bet, but like, like, I'm kinda curious here, if like, we turn a lot of Jack X, that, Jack X probably wants to check a lot here. Like, I feel like our range is that wants to like, our value range wants to go here is like, Queen X plus. Like, which kinda makes me wanna bet like, eleven, but we're out of, it's gonna be something between like eleven and seven, I probably would bet in between those two sizes, it's gonna be something between seven and eleven, um, a lot here.
Isn't seven like geometric, though?
Yeah, no, it'd be closer to eleven. Half pot would be if there was twenty-one, um, half pot is one and a half SPR.
Yeah, geometric works better about one-third of the stack. So I would check here.
Do you go for the, do you go for the value or do you go for the check?
You go for the checks, a pair of board.
So essentially here, the question asks yourself, it's like, if, if we shove.
Um, worse, right?
I mean, like, this might do like a, I just don't know how much bet three we really wanna do.
I love bet three here.
I mean, like, in practice, I like bet three, but it's like, I don't think our range really like, what's our value range here? It's like.
Yeah.
Nothing but three.
Queen eight.
If you bet three, how are you handling a raise with a hand like this?
I mean.
Me, I would fold. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like, you'd bet three with hands like Queen Jack, Queen eight and stuff, and you.
Uh, for me, this is just a give up card.
I like, I like checking, to be honest.
Yeah, there's bet three, I'm like, not terribly surprised, but.
So bet three, and then, let's see, but he doesn't box us, we're good.
But like, so, so.
Add an okay hand to try.
Is this like the normal, like, speed that you guys are going through stuff?
Yeah. No, actually, Louis slowing down.
I was gonna say, it depends on how, uh.
The, the way you guys are going through this right now, um, I would say like, there's not like, there's value, but there's not this ton of value.
Right, okay.
So like, like there, I would have immediately gone in, like, what does the bet three range look like, you know? Like, what is the value? Like, a lot of spots I'm going, like, what's like, on the turn here is where I was really curious, like, um, I didn't know exactly, like, so I'd wanna check, like, I thought our range would be checking a lot on the turn. Like, there's a decent amount of checking, but then I'm looking, with gray check, so like, I like to use the filters. I really like to use the filters on the bottom, right?
Okay.
Above the ace deuce of hearts.
Is this a comment?
No, no, no. Hand summary, filters, blockers.
The right below where it says check.
Down, a little bit, down, 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 right up, 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 there you go.
Yeah, 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 so like, I like to see this for like, so like, our full houses are checking, which makes some sense, um. Like, so we have a lot of second pair, like, like, a lot of our Jack X that did turn wants to check, so that's like, good, I was kind of like, on the mindset of like, so our range is like very polarized, that's betting here. Like, it's basically straights and trips, cuz we're not betting Jack X, we're not betting eight X here on the turn. So, that's why I was kinda was like, eleven kinda makes like, cuz we're betting more polarized, uh, but I guess it's just driven down the size a little bit because, um, I'm assuming we're bet folding, obviously, we're bet folding this combo too. But.
I was curious if we check Chris Flop and get a stone brick, which bluffs we're continuing.
Yeah, like, I think that's a very valid question, it's like, these are the types of things that like, like, I'm looking at a lot, cuz I'm looking for, um.
You make it like, an offsuit too, Louis, like.
I'm like checking for understanding, and more so, I'm checking for spots where I'm completely wrong about stuff, cuz then when I'm completely wrong about something, I'll take note of it, and then like, I'm gonna do a deeper dive into other things to find out if it's just like this one thing, or if it's, um, like, for example, my webinar, the, um, Wednesday, there was like a twenty big blind spot out of position C betting where I thought we'd be checking a lot, we were betting range. And so it's like, okay, so like, I took note of it, cuz I'm gonna do some work on twenty big blind out of position, like.
Interesting.
C betting spots, so, um, that's where, like, the value in, like, I'm essentially, like, when I'm going through my trainer work, I'm going, it, it, it's so slow, cuz I, I go into the sim after every single decision, just to check for general understanding. To make sure, like, I'm talking to myself out loud, like, I think, like, our value range is X, like, and I'm asking like, oh, does this hand wanna value that, eh, like, uh, what's the bottom parts of my range for my bluffs, like, I'm kind of like, it's a very like, slow, like, focusing on quantity over qual, or quality over quantity, I think is really, 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 really important when doing this type of work, to make it valuable, right?
Louis, can we, um, can we take this turn and make it a two of clubs instead, cuz we put a flush draw out there where we have it?
Yeah. So, uh, going to a brick in these spots is always a good place to start, like, how do we apply on a brick?
Straightly.
And like, I like to go into the, like, the filter. Like, on the.
Bunch of straights, that's the.
And like, so here, it's like a common question asked yourself, is, so you check raise all this backdoor flush draw stuff, right?
Mm-hmm.
This is a rainbow flop, right?
Yes.
So like, all that backdoor flush draw stuff, not only miss, but it also blocks like the folds, like, cuz you're trying to fold out backdoor flush draws, so you have a ton of air here. And so essentially, here, like, you're just betting trips or nothing. Like, you're not betting eight X a lot, like, you don't really wanna bet a, at a eight X really that much, because you're not gonna fold out ten-nine, Jack nine, Jack ten anyways, and if you bet eight X, you're just loading the pot, um, a lot into a range that you literally could be drawing dead against, like, they can easily have Queen X here, so you can see like, checking a decent amount of Queen X here, which I don't think I'm doing enough, and I don't think a lot of people do enough. Um. Look at these, like, more the offsuit King X hands, and I'm assuming these are ones with a club, like, these King sevens and stuff that are bluffing?
All over the place, it seems.
You go back to the flop strategy, why are these hands getting to this node? Like, why is like King five off getting here that often? Go back to the. So they're folding.
There, there's a setting that, uh, can you change the weight or whatever so that it doesn't show the, it's like a tiny sliver of the range, but it's showing the full weight.
Oh, I got you, I got you, okay. Yeah, okay, that makes, so, sorry, yeah, that makes sense now.
There we go.
Um, sorry, it's just how, it's, it's not a big deal if it's set like that, like, I'll, I'll change it to that sometimes, but, uh, I was just wondering how we had those hands.
Yeah.
So it's like, uh, this is why I use the filter, like, I just like, I like to look at the filter, cuz I think it's a, a much easier, like, we're just basically have a polarized strategy of like, trips, and then we have to be careful, like, checking out trips here, because we have so many like eight X hands that we want to help, so the reason for checking trips here is because you wanna help get your eight X hands to show down. So you're sacrificing EV with your trips that are chucking to increase the EV of your eight X hands. Is essentially what I think is going on there.
Okay.
And which makes sense, and then like, um, then obviously you have a few bluffs. So that's it, yeah, I think that's pretty interesting hand.
What would you do here with the Queen of spades?
The Queen of spades?
Yes.
Um.
Mostly fold some raise.
I, I'm deciding if it's mostly raise or, eh, it, I, I think it's gonna mix fold and raise, like, obviously, the Ace of Spades goes above there, we don't have much interaction. Uh, so we have like very, so I, how I think about this is we have very little interaction on this flop. And then, so then we're gonna go into backdoor flush draw hands, so we have hands with two hearts, two spades, um, all the Ace of Spade hands are gonna continue, so like, the Queen of Spades in me next, so Queen of Spades nine, for sure, it's continuing. And I'm curious how far down into the Queen of Spades hands we go, I'm gonna guess it raises more.
I'm guessing.
Um. Cuz I think like, I'm, I, I think like, like, you have like Jack of Spades nine, Jack of Clubs, nine of Spades and stuff, and those hands will go ahead of Queen of Spades five, I'm guessing.
Oh, really?
Yeah, cuz they have a backdoor straight draw to go with it.
And every Queen here. Would it also be because they're both above middle pair? Then a Jack nine, yeah, Jack nine more than the Queens, you were right.
Yeah, so they're still go down, like, like, hold on, is it folding the Queen of Spades, all the, those Queen of Spades?
Uh, no, they're playing.
Yeah. So they are calling some too, which is kinda interesting, kinda, I don't do enough, like, they're not pure raises, but.
Spade hard is the pure raise.
They're all losing EV.
Well, they're, losing EV is all in, so.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
But like, you see, like, they're really, really, like, they're point zero two, um, so like, they're obviously very thin, but like, this is a board that's gonna get like, probably raising generates more EVs, they're probably not gonna call enough.
Ooh, even the nine of spade can play a little bit.
Like, I would have raised nine of spade, six, nine of spades, seven, those types of hands before Queen of Spades four.
Well, King eight deuce, our opponent should be range betting here, you know, ninety-five percent of hands, right?
That is your, is your, like, mnemonic, your shortcut to find the nine-six, nine-seven, um, three to a straight, three to a flush? That's one that we're often looking for here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so, fold this one, play the Queen of spades. I'm check raising here.
Hmm, how much, how much like, are you like pure one hundred percent check raising there?
Yeah.
Louis is, like, so like, they, a general heuristic.
Rainbow board, on a rainbow board, it will, for sure, like, this hand probably peers check raises. I'm not sure this hand is strong enough to pure check raise here, like, I'm guessing, if I had to guess here, it's probably like a, I don't know, thirty percent or something like that, like, intend, eh, like, as a general rule, on like the two-tone board, you need a smaller Queen to check raise.
It's pretty aggressive.
So it's like eighty percent, yeah, yeah.
So what we've seen like is like sub forty big blinds typically like.
Yeah, it's a lot of top pair, I thought, um, I was thinking that it would need to be more like have a spade or a heart blocker in there to block some of the backdoor flush draw continues and stuff, but.
To be honest, though, I'm not this aggressive in actual game with my top pairs.
No, and Norse should, like, if you run this at like forty percent of the field left, I doubt this Queen ten check raises.
So that's an interesting question, man, that's a very interesting question, uh, how, how would you adjust with like fifty percent of the field here? Based on this, or say you're on a final table.
Like.
Dude, we, we've told you this a million times, like, sizes get smaller and you don't play as aggressively.
Yeah, you end up like not check raising, even like Ace ten here some.
He wants to hear it from the man.
Like, you, you, you would lean more towards wanting to have a spade in your hand, um, and the Queen ten is just gonna have pretty poor equity against the get in range, so I would just pure call in those situations.
Okay, what about the King ten?
Probably the same, and then like, like, with a spade, maybe it check raises a little bit, um, it's hard to know, I, I've been tempted about maybe trying to do some work on some post-flop, like forty percent of the field stuff left, but.
That would be really interesting, cuz we don't have any guides, we don't have any models for that.
Yeah, I mean, it's basically.
Always arguing basically about it, cuz we don't have any solution.
So I, I have a question, Matt, if you're gonna do some forty percent of the field work, what would your process be for that? Cuz I've done some, I've done some comparative analysis stuff for us, but like, okay, like with Pyo, the ICM models only have like final table adjusted stuff, right?
So, yeah, see, like, that's where I, I, I'm sure, like, I've, I've ran some ICM stuff in Pyo and stuff, but, um, like, you can export, like, this, I don't have the competing power to run like forty percent pre-flop ranges in HRC, like, I have access to, to like forty percent of the field left ranges and stuff, uh, but.
We could generate those ranges with HRC, I mean, we have the capabilities to do that, make.
Like, there's a way in HRC you can export the whole ICM model to Pyo.
You can do that here as well, like fifty percent field, here you go.
Yeah, like, I, like, I'm familiar with these ranges and stuff, and like, I feel like these are the ranges a lot of times, like, I feel like it's a lot more valuable to be working with these ranges, more so than Chippie V stuff, because you play so much more of the tournament with this. However, a lot of the tools don't have post-flop training with this type of stuff, and so that's, I think, kinda the next evolution.
So it's like, I know what it does on the extremes, like, I know, kind, I have like.
Yeah, then if you know what you do is in the extremes, like, you can kinda fudge it for the middle stuff, like, it's more important to kinda know the extremes rather than, um, the middles, like, the extremes is easier to settle, study, and then it's easier to like kinda fudge it in the middle.
Right.
My.
Yeah, just run an interpolation function in your brain.
Yeah.
We've, I mean, we've kinda been doing that, like, like I said, like, we understand the behavior at final tables, how it behaves post-flop, like, it's not gonna be nearly as aggressive, and sizes are smaller, et cetera, et cetera.
So we spoke, we spoke a little bit about the raising range, right? Uh, you raise less, blah, 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 that, that's fine. Do you, do you adjust your calling range with like second pair here? Like a bad second pair, that is.
Like, what do you wanna do? Do you wanna fold?
Yes.
No, why would you wanna?
Well, if you, like Bert Stevens, he's gonna say, he's gonna advocate for a fold, like.
I guarantee you, Bert will never say to fold to a two big blind bet here from the button with second pair of nines.
Well, the thing he says is like, what are we gonna do against a turn barrel?
But, like, it's one of those things, you just deal with it, like, it's something that's only gonna happen like half the time anyways.
I think the idea is like, the adjustments that you make should be post-flop, once you've kind of.
I'd be very, very, very surprised if Bert was folding to a two big blind bet in this situation in Chippie V.
No, I can't. We're talking about ICM final table.
Oh, okay, well, um.
Oh, I thought we were talking.
It's still a call. Like, it's not like your stack is not at risk here, calling two big blinds out of forty, at a final table.
Yeah.
It's not like, people think like this ICM, like, means you have to play super tight, it doesn't. It just means you go into like, like, you still play a lot of hands pre-flop, you're just not three betting, you're like flatty with like Queens and Kings, which, like, when you're starting to flat Kings pre-flop or Queens pre-flop, that allows you to flat Jack nine suited, because you're protected, your range is, you can't get squeezed when you have like Kings in your flatty range.
Alright, so this is like the solution for twenty-five big blinds, so we are shorter. Where, where it's closer, like, uh, what are we?
Like, look at the EV, it's like making three big blinds, I don't know, I don't, I don't, like, it's, it's, you have a really strong hand.
Oh, Matt.
Nine-six did lose EV, but it's still pretty high.
Matt, is it a good general, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ken.
No, go ahead.
Is it a good generalization just to think that you're doing more pot controlling in deep ICM?
Um, I don't know if I like to think about it that way. It's probably like, it's, it's, you're, you're not wrong at all. I think it's more, I like, I guess it's just how I think about it. It's more the equity thresholds for value betting increase, so. Um, in that way, you're checking back hands that would normally be value bets. Um, I just hate the word pot control. I guess that's more my, that that's more me not liking the terminology.
Playing a little bit more passive.
Uh, it's sure, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's 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 more polarization because the equity threshold is higher.
So tell me if like this is a reasonable like thought approach to this, like the way I kind of think about it is I try to get a bearing on what the risk premium of the scenario is. And I adjust my like aggression threshold and my calling threshold basically roughly that same percent. So like if the risk premium of the scenario, let's say at, I don't know, five percent of the field left, I'm gonna estimate maybe a five percent risk premium or something. So I'm going to adjust my calling threshold by about five percent globally and maybe adjust my aggression, the hands that I go aggressive with up about five percent globally.
Um, sure, that's one way, like, I don't have an argument for against that. How I think about it is pulls me in the cutoff and have forty big blinds and there's five percent, uh, like, and I'm looking at the like, if everyone has twenty big blind stacks, twenty five big blind stacks, I'm asking myself, this is about I wanna expand or contract my range.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Probably I wanna expand a little bit, like, it's kind of like both kind of there because you have rejam stacks in there. So like, maybe it's like equal, so I'm probably opening like no tighter than like thirty five percent there, but like, um, if I have twenty big blinds and they all have forty, it's probably a spot I wanna contract my range, so I'm gonna be opening tighter. So like, that's kind of the basis of how I'm thinking about these spots.
So, so say your final table, you get post flop and you against you and another bigger stack at the table, there's a bunch of stacks, say like have half your chips. Are you like cautious post flop with your marginal stuff not to drop? Say two, like you don't really wanna, I'm saying, I'm asking, would you, are you risk adverse so to not drop below the other lower stacks?
Um, not really how I think about the game in terms of like, I think more about the decisions rather than like the I'm not gonna change from a plus E V decision to a negative E V decision just because of how it's gonna affect my
future.
Yeah, there. So it's more like, um, just like the amount of the like I guess you're overthinking it a little bit in terms of just the, um, risk premium is gonna affect what your equity thresholds are, and the equity thresholds are basically what can you value bet? And so in situations, the risk premiums are higher, your equity threshold for value betting maybe goes on the river, goes from like a seventy percent hand or a seventy five percent hand to a eighty five or ninety percent hand.
Alright.
And so you're, 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 you're going much more polarized. And then since you're, so this is where like, I don't know, I bluff catch a ton final tables, cuz like people kind of know they should pot control more, but they also just go, well, they have to fold if I bet. So they end up like, people also like you have to a lot of times be very constrained in what hands you bluff. Um, in the like final table spots, so.
Yeah, I bluff too much.
I'm.
On the fish you're just talking about.
Uh, yeah, I I I saw some shenanigan yesterday with regards to that. Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Alright.
You gonna throw another hand up there?
Yes.
So like this is a spot I'm not gonna raise. I'm probably gonna play check again. Lead some.
Lead some, yeah.
So like this is a spot like I'd be going in the sim to look at like our leading strategy a lot there, cuz like for example, like Gailly, you said check again, and it was betting quite a bit here. It was, this is, yeah. So is it because he's. Our range is betting like, like, like queen is not an ace, it's not a king. Um, we have a lot of hands that wanna bet for like, so we're doing a lot of small betting, you can see here, like it's.
Lovely, yeah.
It's mostly like, it's betting like one big blind, like one point two, so it's not as a big of a deal than if it was betting like two or three big blinds, cuz betting one point two is similar, very similar to checking, so it's not worth a ton, like checking is probably fine, so like that's one thing I would look at here. And just like starting to look at here, like how much nine X is betting, how much like five X is betting like quite a bit. So I'd go to filters here. That's just how I visually like to look at it, like by hand category. Like, it's a lot of second pair, a lot of third pair. Lot of low pairs, that's pretty interesting.
And and like what makes me curious is like, I would think they're betting more queens on the flop than say aces.
Yeah, it's not like an ace or like you can change the turn to a king or an ace, like we're we're checking forty five, we're gonna check a lot more on a king.
I would think so too.
Like the ace is almost a, we're gonna be a range check, like, yeah, like that, that makes sense. And then like
right.
King of clubs, offsuit.
Maybe like seventy percent now?
Yeah, probably seems reasonable. Still betting quite a bit.
Yeah. So with the nine on the board, I imagine they're see betting a lot of their king X, queen X, jack X, ten X, and uh, checking more ace X on the flop probably.
Yeah, I mean, the nine here, they're gonna be checking back a decent amount on like the five, four combination, like nine, five, four has a decent amount checks, like, what do you think the see any frequency is here for you in position?
On the flop or on the pair.
Could be somewhat polarized bet.
Fifty percent.
Yeah, I think they're betting like, yeah, sure, something forty, fifty percent. I mean, sixty, sixty, I was thinking in checking like sixty to fifty percent, it seems reasonable. It's like a lot of the overcard hands are checking. Yeah, they are. Yeah, I was a little bit surprised to see that much king X, but there's a lot more like weak ace X than there is weak king X. Well, be right back, I'm gonna make a coffee.
Okay. Not too shabby. So what Matt's saying is our supreme leader should slow down.
I was like.
He's told that ten times a day.
I know, I know, I know. That's, that's basically, uh, the takeaway I got to, Nicola. Be more.
Well, we used to do that. The first six months, we dove so deep into everything, right? Now it just feels like he knows the heuristics so well.
The turn of heart, I'm sorry, guys, the king four, I knew that one in the back of my mind. I knew what turn exact to fire. Uh, I mean, I'm going fast cuz I think I know it, but of course, like I'm wrong, but.
But like, even if you think you do, some of us don't, like I'm dumb, so I need at least ten minutes to think about what to do.
Yeah.
That's part of it, like with a group, everyone will have different things they wanna think about, and it makes it tough to explore every.
Don't click anything.
This is pretty spicy.
Wanna leave?
So, so I mean.
Deuce three, maybe not, I don't.
I wanna lead.
No, I don't really wanna lead, but it seems like a good combo to check raise, right?
Yeah, so deuce, I I think the deuce will be less popular than like than like if it was a three or four, six or something, three, four, seven, maybe. Um, I think it'll be minor frequencies of lead, and I mean, if you were gonna lead, this has got some pretty attractive properties, right? So what percentage of our range you think is leading here?
Eight.
Uh, I was gonna say maybe like ten to twenty or something. Okay, yeah, I'm in like the fifteen ballpark.
So, yeah.
Leads? I'm five, five percent.
Yeah, so we were saying like with the deuce, it's gonna drop the frequency down a little bit. If it was a pip higher, let's say like a six, four, three, it would be a a much more attractive spot, but this spot will still have leads, and this would be an attractive combo to lead with.
Yeah, I think there's two things going on there. One is that we don't have lots of these two pairs, neither player does. And the other piece is that like, um, wheel is a very strong hand here and button has it, and like.
So it's like a lot of the advantage comes from our six, four, off and five.
Sure, there's leads.
I'm sure there's a few leads, but not a ton. As you get to earlier positions, there will be some leads. Right, so, but like, so like, this is a spot like Louis, like, you have to go look at the sim at this spot.
Yeah.
It's like this showed like a nine percent lead for this hand, but like, I would always, uh, like, I'm more concerned with what the global strategy is here.
My guess is that with the three and the deuce, there's not much leading.
Yeah, like I could see both are, yeah, I mean.
And against button, I didn't expect to.
Yeah, it was early position. So yeah, it's like essentially it's just a check range spot.
And say we moved it up one chip to three, four, uh, three, four, six.
Three, four, I think we we lead a lot.
Yeah, I think we will raise.
So leading increases as you get uh, more straights available. So like here you have the ace deuce and the seven, six and the six deuce. So the more straights possible, and also here you made it rainbow instead of two-tone, so rainbow, there's more leads than two-tone.
Right.
So those are like the two factors you got pulling here. So you only had two straights on the last board, and now you're putting three straights on this one, and you 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 made it rainbow instead of two-tone.
Yeah, right, the two-tone nature is gonna make his continuing range more threatening. So like, that's why I think you get. Yeah, it's just easier, easier to continue for him. Um, I kinda wanna continue for how big I wanna go.
I wanna go three, three point three five.
I was gonna say through it.
Oh, I only admit that wants to check. Oh, one point two.
Oh, I I hate check. What percentage are we betting here, probing? I'm guessing.
Eighty percent.
Sixty or seven.
A ton, yeah. Forty or fifty, it's so, it's really hard to bet eighty because you went check, check on the flop. So like you just have too much garbage in your range for it to ever be that high. It's almost like the probe, it's really hard for the probe to get the highest you'll see is like if the flop is like six, five, four, turn seven, then you'll see like some sixty to seventy percent probes, but it's pretty hard for it to get like above that, just because you have you have to remember until you take a of passive action of fold, your range is just too weak in the big blind.
Hmm. Didn't we find some range, range turn leads last time when we were looking at that?
Yeah, we did turn pro.
Oh, we have to call, no other option.
Raising?
Curious if it would ever raise, but I'm, I mean, my standard is gonna be called, there might be a slower raise.
A six kicker, probably not. Seven kicker, we do it.
I mean, it's just we have a straight draw.
Hmm, I think you'd be more likely to raise with the six and the seven.
Alright.
Well, like nine, six is a better hand than nine, seven, because they never have nine, eight, so.
There is a little seven, why would you prefer that? Why would you prefer seven, though?
Um, because in general, when you look at what kicker you're check raising on the flop, the cusp is always around the seven.
So you're just guessing, you don't, you don't think it has to do something with his bluffs coming from six?
No, I think we need.
I think I'll probably be, like, go to the buttons, right? I'm guessing the six, six. I'm guessing it has more to do with what's bluffing here.
That's what I thought.
The the raid bluff raises come from ten, six, jack, six, queen, six, that's what's going on there. That's why I prefer the seven. Right, cuz in general, you're gonna shove, when you're raising here or shoving here, you're gonna choose the higher equity hand. But here, it blocks the.
You don't wanna block the bluffs, so you're pushing them towards value naturally and, um, yeah, you wanna kind of control it. That makes sense to me.
Yeah, and the six and a four can make straights.
Can I make a request for a spot?
Yeah, let's go.
Let's see, I wanna do like deep stack, three betting out of position.
Yeah.
I want like eighty big blinds, small blind versus.
I'm playing some, I'm playing some live cash tonight, so, uh, I need to look at some of this. Oh, uh, watch the video I posted.
No, no, small blind, small blind.
I am gonna watch it, I am gonna watch it. I uploaded it to the, uh, the.
So can we look at the ranges first, please? I wanna see like, so like the small line three bet from, it's like tens plus, a lot of offsuit queens, suited broadways, some board coverage stuff.
Are you going ten point three? I wouldn't go that big at this step. We're at a position.
Yeah, I'm going no smaller than ten.
Nine's enough.
I kinda, I agree with ten, but. Yeah, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter that much, like it's gonna change the range, but.
Actually, if you.
If you look up P F A, their range, their raise sizings are even bigger, I think.
Yeah. The minions are pretty close here, cuz like imposition is so flatty and like some big hands.
Um. So call, and then there's a button to. Yeah, there it is.
I bet studying cash games has ruined me for three bet spots. Alright, so random flop, and you just wanna three bet.
Don't have the small blind check.
Click on the flop, I think. Yeah, click the flop node.
Uh, there we go, yeah.
Um, ace high, two-tone here. I I mean, I'm gonna bet this a lot, probably for.
Small size, I'm just trying to see if we're gonna range, like we gotta have a, we're probably, actually, I think kings and queens and jacks still bet to get value from small pairs, so.
Ace low, I think we're betting very, very frequently.
Yeah, I think we're just pretty close to a range bet for a quarter to a third.
I was thinking, uh. I would go half pot, but.
Hmm, I don't think we, if we're range betting with kings and queens and jacks and stuff, I don't think we want a half pot here.
Has some tenth.
You can build like a they 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 use the ten percent here a lot, but.
So the seven is a pretty heavy blank.
I just wanna make sure we're actually, are we actually range betting here? No, so there's like a decent amount of check, like kings and queens and jacks and tens. I thought like those hands would still wanna get value from like the smaller pairs, but yeah, do you go buy a high card? Group grouping by high card, yeah. So low cards and like king high boards at best. I mean, all the Broadway, any high cardboard, decent amount of betting, checking on the low cardboards, as expected.
She, can you filter by, um?
Do you use this portion here? Cuz I really like it, like you can see here ace low, low. It's mostly gonna be like a bet small, whereas when it's like, uh, these are gonna be like two broadways, you're betting any two cards, right? So your checking range come from ace low, low.
Is that giant spike, not ace low, low, the giant blue spike for, uh, or?
Ace two, two. This, these are king.
That's the paired kings.
So I really like to use that little tool here, you can see the range from here, from here, and then nine, nine boards or lower.
Yeah, so like the ace high, high is getting bet more than I thought then because all your suited broadways and stuff, like all your, your bluffs connect on those.
And you see, like best board king eye, second best board ace eye, third queen nine, no, jack eye is better than queen nine.
Jack and I.
Vision has. Wait, do we still have these, um, overbet jams like on the, uh, oh, yeah, right here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Still, still, yeah.
Hey, man, Jack ten.
Those are just one fifty, but.
Connected.
I wouldn't really.
Alright, so bet small, do you double barrel here? I would not.
Me either.
This hand's awful, having hearts is like the worst suit for betting here.
So, so is our range gonna be polar here, though, when we do bet?
Probably, like, I don't think we necessarily wanna be betting like ace ten maybe bet sometimes, but it probably doesn't wanna bet that often.
But the range is gonna be polar.
We could probably, we could probably bet smaller, though, to include some of those. I'm kinda interested to see, like, this is, these are the spots here on like the turn and where I get a little lost, but I know this hand, I think, wants to like.
So like, are we gonna?
If not pure, I would probably pure, I would just pure check this cuz having hearts is the worst.
Do you guys think we're gonna check a ton on this, uh, turn because we have, still have kings, queens, jacks, we have so many bluffs and very few value hands to where our range doesn't really benefit.
Well, I'm wondering if we bet small enough or we can still bet like queens and stuff. I wouldn't do it in practice cuz people are gonna fold too much, but, uh, I think it's worth looking at for sure.
I would check like very, very often, even like ace queen, I would be checking just about.
Yeah, I think the range is pretty polar here.
I think ace queen's gonna wanna bet for sure, but.
Yeah, you're checking seventy percent still.
Yeah, so like seventy percent betting, um, go to the filters. I mean, it's just checking like half our ace X, so I'm assuming it's mostly the weaker ones. And then, um, starting to bluff some seven X, which makes some sense, but we don't.
Why is, why is queen jack suited betting?
Probably flush draw.
Uh, it's probably spades and it's clubs and diamonds, and it's blocking the ace queens and ace jacks, which are the strongest ace X that they have. So like ace queen off and ace jack off are gonna be the two strongest offsuit ace X that they have. So that's why it's using that a lot. So like hearts bets the least. Um, yeah, I'm guessing that's, that has a lot to do with it.
Interesting, interesting, and we were checking ace king more than ace queen.
Uh, I'm guessing because there's, um, king high floats from imposition that we dominate. So it just blocks, like those are the hands that are folding, it's gonna be king highs.
And king six suited was bluffing pure, right? Is that what I saw?
Yep.
A sliver, but.
Yeah, it's kind of like value, it's kind of like bluff protection, kind of mergey.
Blocking sets, two pairs.
This is a tough spot.
This is kind of tough because, um, I mean, we.
I mean, we, we have no showdown really and we could get folds from spades sometimes, like do you ever?
And go back to the rule. Did you pick up equity on the turn? No, so your bluff is shutting down.
No, but we're, it's like.
This is a different.
Bottom of the range now. Yeah, it's like we're gonna be bluffing from stuff that. Unblocks his, the stuff he continues to flop with, so spades, you don't wanna have a spade here to bluff and then I'm gonna bluff from the bottom of the deck up. So this is.
Yeah, it went check, check on the turn, so it's like. We, I think we will maybe bluff from this sometimes.
Does not have every ace six in his hand, like ace five, ace four, ace three.
Do you wanna block queens now? I mean, well, but we'll still, we'll still have ace X in range though, too, that wants to go for value and we'll have pocket queens to get there, so.
Yeah, we like, like what our value range here is like. Almost all our ace X can go small here. It's kinda weird that I don't like that it has like three and a half and twelve. As the size, it's kind of a big gap, but like, like. Ace nine can for sure value, but here small, like. Ace X is like basically our value range here. I think this hand is really, really tough because yes, it's low in our range, but. Hearts is like the worst suit to bluff with here. You block like king, jack of hearts, jack ten of hearts. Like those types of hands. So it's kind of two things, like I find this very difficult in terms of uh. It's low in our range and we we block ace jack offsuit, but they don't really have ace jack, ace nine offsuit.
It's not that low in our range because we bluff much worse combos against them, no?
Uh, I mean, it's. Not a lot of worse hands in this cuz they're all suited gems. We're gonna have some like.
King seven offsuit, king six, king eight.
I mean, those are pairs. We don't have king.
You don't have king eight offsuit in range.
So what if you had jack nine of clubs?
I might, I would pure bet jack nine.
Okay, okay, okay.
And jack nine of diamonds. I probably, yeah, it's like um. I've had it very tough, like I'm not, I wouldn't be surprised if the Sam bets, but um. I think we have. I'm not sure if we have enough, too much air to um. Have to control, so. I just say like the general thing I'm going off of is like, it's a simple rules here is I know hearts are gonna be bad, so I wouldn't be surprised if this pure checks, but I also wouldn't be surprised with. Bets if it's just cuz it's so low, so that's where I'm a little bit.
It could be the bottom of the range, but in my mind, whenever we don't pick up.
Well, a lot of those hands that you just highlighted over are barely in turn, like ten, nine, ten, eight. Those types of hands are gonna barrel the turn more and they're only suited combos, so it's only four combos each.
Right, so those worst hands Louis did pick up equity with the seven, like as a gut shot or an open ender, so this is.
This is a give up and the other wins are far. Is that my right?
Maybe, I think you might fire this one.
Like this is probably gonna bet like, I'm gonna guess this is like. I don't know. It it bluffs, I think it's gonna bluff some percentage of the time. I wouldn't be surprised if it's check. I'd be very surprised if it bluffed a hundred percent of the time.
Before we click anything, like I'm going twelve here with my bluffs and my value.
Yeah, that makes some sense.
Yeah, I like that.
Sometimes I get to these spots, I don't know what size to go and I just end up giving up.
Well, it's like, what's your value range? So, so.
I, that's the thing, right? Your value is gonna wanna bet big, no?
Um, no, I don't think you wanna go that big here because like imposition still probably checks back ace jack a decent amount on the turn. Um, probably checks back. It has ace queen sometimes on the turn.
Twelve, I get called by queen jack of spades.
Like, I think like a lot of our ace X wants to go twelve here, maybe like. I find it kinda hard. I don't think it can go really twenty. I guess I still think there's gonna be a lot of check on this river, like.
What, what size do you use for a left and spade?
I'm team twenty. I'm not betting my spades ever.
Spades are trash. Spades, I probably wouldn't be bluffing that much.
Nine ten of spades, you don't bluff?
No, you want him to have.
You're blocking, like you need him to have spades.
I think nine ten of spades is, I, I think like the king of spades is a really bad card to have cuz like this player's gonna have like king of spades, jack. But like nine ten of spades, you don't block as many of the one spade combos. But so you see sometimes the low spades bluffing, but. I'm guessing this mostly checks and then I wouldn't be surprised to see some bet twelve.
Alright, let's see.
So it's twenty, so it's uh, yeah.
Or, or check.
I'm guessing what that means then is that we're not, we're not bluffing with, we're not value betting ace eight, I'm guessing.
Yes, I mean, we still have ace, king, ace, queen, ace, jack in range.
Yeah, I mean, I'm guessing they do too, but.
Imagine you bet ten percent here and it gets through.
Yeah, so like ace seven, ace six is checking, um, ace five, like those are betting like three and a half, like I'm not surprised to see some three and a half. Ace queen checking, I'm actually not surprised to see that or bet small. I thought that might be the case. Kings is betting small, but like ace jack wants to go bigish, ace ten. Like I'm guessing king jack does not want, like king jack offsuit is gonna be bluffing without a spade, I'm guessing. Like the king jack off suits that are bluffing, it's gonna check with the king of spades and bet without the spade. Can you highlight over king jack off?
There you go.
Yeah, still bets with the king of spades some, like the jack of spades.
Just ripping it.
Is it blocks like their ace, king and ace jack offs?
Mm hmm, right.
Like.
It's gonna be hard for them to have a hand strong enough.
We gotta be fairly constrained. With the, can you um, make it back to the weights, please?
Yeah, I was just thinking that too.
I wanna see how constrained we have to be.
Seven are not there, yeah.
So like there's some ten eight checking, some ten nine, like I'm just seeing if there's, if we're. Checking any unpair, like so like king nine's checking, king ten's checking, like we still have to be a little bit constrained.
Uh, do you have this uh, ten percent jam in your strategy? Like with jack eight of diamonds, are you, are you just ripping it?
Oh, for like two X?
Yeah.
Hello? Not really, but.
Hi.
Probably fine.
I don't have this in my game. I'd have like pot here, maybe a hu-. A little bit bigger.
I mean, I can just tell you that you're getting called by ace jack, so that's like the reason it's choosing the jack X hands. Like, see when you jam here, what's calling you? That's all it's, like the, the way to find the blush is asking yourself, what's gonna call me? It's probably gonna be um.
Good question.
Like some of these queen, I bet you like. If you do this, like, like if we check and face a bet, like what are gonna be the hands you wanna, like, what's gonna be your like? Check jamming strategy, check raising strategy. To be, whoa.
You wanna have a jack or?
I was gonna say it's queen X hands, I'm guessing.
Blocking ace, queen, ace, jack.
Uh, yeah, I mean, like, I think, I feel like blocking queens and ace queen is gonna be the most important.
If I had like jack queen of diamonds, I would check raise.
Nine eight's kinda interesting. I would have chosen the queen X hands over it. I would have checked jam like queen, jack, queen, ten, king, queen.
Not a spades, though. I'm not doing it with spades.
Uh, they shouldn't bluff with spades, so, but a lot of people don't know that, so like. That's kinda like now spades are fine to do it with. Hmm, can move along.
Nick, the two X pot could be fun like early in tournaments cuz I feel like people don't like to fold as much and then you can get.
Alright, so queen, high, three deuce, queen, high, dry, like. I would be uh. Tempted to bet small here, just because he's gonna have a, he's gonna have a hard time continuing, like you get honest information, I think. But I could, I could see checking being a very reasonable thing to.
And we're checking like thirty to forty percent of range, right, on the queen?
I mean, queen knife boards check a lot, but having the three and the deuce, I mean, hijack does have threes and deuces, this probably checks more than we think, like. My first instinct was bet, but was bet five, but it probably just check, checks a decent amount, but.
Check some, but um, I, I like, like you said, the rainbow nature and the three and the deuce, um.
So here, though, the three and the deuce, like it does, but it does help connect with like they have threes and deuces and we don't. So like, they're still like, just not a lot of check, like there's just not like, like what hands wanna range check here, it's like. Nine eight of clubs, like.
Yeah, you're like absolute trash.
And that's like generally the case out of position that your trash just wants to check. Sound like, you know, rocket science here, like out of position generally, you, you, you don't wanna bet with clubs here as much, like.
So we played it as a, we're gonna play it as a bet, okay?
Well, bet big, I would have never done that.
Uh, you're smoked.
Well.
Good, good game.
Matt, are you not in aggression? Like the deeper stack you are, the more big bets you got here. It's mostly a big bet strategy, I think, here.
Yeah, I'm probably not bet, betting, betting um, big enough here. I mean, like. Uh, I especially wouldn't have done with tens.
Yeah, like jacks, I'm.
I mean, it's just getting called, I guess, enough by like smaller pairs.
I'm betting small here if I bet, like I.
Yeah, I would have transitioned mostly to a small size here, um.
I just think it's an efficiency deal also, like if they're not defending.
Right, like it's weird that like Ken still wants to bet big when you're getting eights and sevens or just folding to the big bet.
I think some of it's like an MDF thing for the solver, though, like the solver's obviously gonna be more sticky than like what you're actually playing in real life, so. I think it may just benefit from the bigger bet a little bit more.
The board is dry enough that it's all about what is your. It's, what's the equity against, what is your hands equity against the continuing range? And they're, they're forced to continue with enough ace high backdoor flush draws, like. Ace seven suited and ace eight suited probably.
All the ace wheels too.
Yeah, like, well, ace wheels are like, you're not doing that great against like ace four hearts or whatever, like, yeah, but they're not making a mistake, like. Like, is ace eight of hearts continuing or ace nine of hearts continuing versus big bet?
Yeah.
First.
Uh, here.
Probably. Yeah, I mean, it's mixing fold, like those are hands you don't really wanna fold out. So it's like interesting, like I wouldn't have found the big bet with like tens, um, like queen extra, like king, queen, stuff like that, but.
Oh, I'm definitely checking on the ace turn.
Yeah, we're smoked here, I think, too much, like his marginal continues just got better.
This probably. I'm curious if this calls any because like we dominate all the bluffs are gonna, the bluffs are gonna come from small pairs here.
I'm over folding.
But like I'm folding here, but I wouldn't be surprised, like. Yeah, I, I'm not like.
Oh, you got us.
Wow, he called that flop, but king six.
So this is definitely a big bet for me. What about you guys?
Yeah.
Seven, four, we're gonna be checking fairly often here.
Check raise some too.
This hand is never checking.
Yeah, I'm not checking.
Oh, I think it's gonna check, uh, maybe like twenty percent.
Big bet.
I, I think it's gonna check some for sure, like I would have bet half pot.
You guys are pretty close.
Okay.
It's just like we can't. We can't.
Sorry, I'm always like, I look at the, the, the strategy after everything, like here, like when I'm guessing, like otherwise I'm just guessing.
No, man, this is, this is, this is good. Drive it into his brain.
Yeah, you guys gotta be like.
Cuz in my mind, nine eye board like this, it's always gonna be a big bet.
It is, but you have to have checks too cuz it doesn't connect well with your range, it's better.
Because like a lot of the strategy here is too, is like when we check, they're probably gonna be betting like. Fifty-five percent of the time and then you're putting a check raise with like. King of spades, queen and stuff like.
Like the other heuristic we know is like that he's not that big is like we know we're betting generally the tens and jacks bigger and like your jack X, ten X plus.
Like, go, go to like king, queen off and stuff. Yeah, like the, these hands start to love to like wanna check raise, um.
With the spade.
Yeah, ace jack loves to check raise here. Queen jack of hearts, what are we doing with?
I'm probably check calling those too often.
Queen jack of hearts, like, yeah, pure check raise, so like I kinda did the webinar on this, um.
Front door, back door?
Um. Wednesday, the plane out of position was talking about like. These similar spots like cutoff versus button, like these are all the same hands that you choose to check raise, like king ten, king jack, like choosing mostly like king ten. Might even do it without a spade sometimes, like go to king ten. You wanna not have a heart here also when you check raise. Like, so like, um.
Aren't they checking most their uh, hearts on the flop, like the backdoor flush draw?
Uh, yeah, but in reality, I don't think they do. They, they think backdoor flush draw is better than not backdoor flush draw.
Ooh. That's smaller check.
Check, we're gonna be checking a ton here.
Big, I'm checking.
His range is heavily just around suited.
Seems like, like our range is gonna check a lot, but like this is still like the hand that needs a shit ton of protection and stuff.
Yeah, value.
Can we look? Can you go to the solve there on the turn? Like, these are the spots like, so I'm gonna do a webinar on this cuz like this is the spots that I've been struggling like. Especially live where I'm up normally against like, they overfold the pre-flop, they probably overfold the flop and like these are the spots that I'm like, just really struggling with. In live is like deeper stack turn. It's like decent betting, amount of betting, so with the, like, we're only playing with like a one SPR, so.
Yeah, so if when we.
I would not have bet this big either. It's like half pot, I wouldn't have really chosen.
Do we check jam this if we checked it? And they bet?
No, I doubt, I doubt it, like, it's probably not, I don't think you're only check raise, jam a hand that can like, just be drawing dead.
I agree.
Eh, that probably with the spade, I'm like guessing. Can you go over the jacks? Is it with a spade that's jamming? Yeah, it's only with the spade.
My value?
And we have to bet, um, I don't think we get to go that big, though, maybe mixes.
He's good.
I'd, I'd go like sixteen.
Sixteen.
With this hand, I like sixteen.
Nope.
Oh, you're right. It is big.
Value.
I would go that size with the jack of spades in my hand.
Yeah, I'm in hell.
This is.
It's a fold?
Probably. I mean, it'd be better to call it tens, you wanna block. It's probably better to call with ace of spades, queen or something, or ace queen with the spade than.
Fucking jack with the jack of spade you call?
Absolutely.
More so, yeah, than this one, yeah.
Wanna have a spade blocker or maybe?
Like tens are a lot better, like they, you wanna block like the slow played hands on the turn. It's like ten eight, locking ten eight is more valuable.
Look at the ace queen call. Uh, well, that's not just spades, right?
Um, I don't know, cuz he has, he has it on full weight, so let's see. Look at the ace queen.
It's just a flush.
That is the flush.
They're suited. Yeah, it's so low frequency, I can't even tell which, which is jamming.
Hearts are calling solid illusion piles.
Yeah, it's just spades. It's like hearts would be the worst one because, you know, that's kind of a cool bluff.
Oh, he got us again.
Callers screw me up too.
That was actually really cool. Can you go back? Was that the seven, seven, six, nine board with the spades?
Yeah, he was just blocking the straight.
That's actually pretty like. That is a, that is a great bluff. Like, it makes a lot of sense cuz you're unblocking, it's not the hands that we're bluffing with, um.
Did he have the eight of spades? I guess it's fairly irrelevant.
No, like most of our flushes are probably jamming anyways. Like, go back, uh, can we, you saw that? Hand up. I just wanna see what the.
No, it was, it's the wrong board.
Yeah, it's the wrong board. Yeah, this one, uh, go to the river for imposition. Or like actually go to our strategy on the river.
Nice, huh?
Um.
There's the turn.
Yeah, call.
Go back to check, it was check, check turn.
Yeah, it was check, check.
And it was like a six of.
Six of hearts, six of hearts. So like. Go to filters. So like the, the like bet small ranges, like full houses a little bit, like nines and then like. Top pair, nine X and some over pairs. I mean, it's basically like a pair of nines or like an over pair, so like eights, like identifying the eights are bluff catcher there is. You know, whatever, it's not that difficult, I guess. Um, but then. Go to bet sixteen. I always like to see what hands that.
Oh my man, thirty-five percent of the range. Wow.
I mean, like, well, a lot of that is if you look, it's trips are better, which is, and over pairs. Are shoving cuz those are all, they beat the value range, like it's just a pair of nines and some slow plays. So if you look at that, it's not like. This just shows you like how it is difficult to um, bet very thinly here because we're beat a lot. So then you see like a lot of the blush comes from like under pairs, it's like. Pocket.
Sixes.
Eights, no, six is a full house, so it's like eights.
That's it, five's a little bit, but.
It's just eights, okay, and then.
Checked a ton of flushes on the turn.
Yeah, which is not surprising, like imposition, it's like a one point three SPR, like that tends to happen. Then like, it's a lot of ace high and king high hands, so like, I'm assuming they're mostly with a spade, like go to king, queen off. Yeah, I mean, they have to have a spade, the offsuit ones have to have a spade, or like ace jack, I'm assuming, like you could have it without a spade. Yeah, like having the jack spades sometimes. Yeah, like having the Jack Spades sometimes is better here than the Ace, that makes sense, like Ace Queen suited. It's just, uh, like Ace Eight suited, Ace Five suited. Yeah, so. It's kind of interesting, it's cool.
Yeah.
Range bets small.
It stands and checks some, but yeah. Pretty good one to barrel blocking Ace Queen, Ace Jack, uh, what are we at, like two SPR? It's probably even like more that short, if you bet. Or yeah, like two SPRs, like seventy-five percent of the pot, which is like. What, almost. Between seventeen and twenty-five.
What size does Ace King pick here, I think it picks seventeen.
It's like between seventeen and twenty-five probably.
Yeah.
It's like, like whatever the geometric sizing is.
Yeah.
Sure.
And then we just give up or will we block?
No, check and cry when he jams. Cry when he jams. I'm folding.
You gotta call.
I mean, practice on fully, um. Like this is the exact spot where like.
With this hand every ace.
Like I'm probably folding like Ace King in person here a lot.
Okay.
Like I'm not like blocking Ace Queen and Kings, can we, I, I just wanna. Go back to the turn strategy.
Folding Ace.
Yeah, are you always going geometric, Matt?
I mean, that's just how I simplify, I would just have a geometric sizing. Like it's like the solver basically has one size here.
Fifty-five percent, almost every time.
So you're folding Ace King, you said?
Like in reality, yeah. Which is just one of the spots like.
Two pairs?
Like what's? Like. I wanna see where the solver's drawing its blush from, well, can you just go back to the turn, I still wanna look at the turn strategy. Like it's just Ace King, Ace Queen, again, it's like high check and then it's. Queen Jack's really good, like I'm assuming Queen Jack of Clubs, but. Yeah, it's still mostly Diamonds, Jack ten is the one blocking, well, Jack ten has equity. Sure. Can you? What about when we, can you face a check, like we check and then I wanna face like a geometric sizing on the turn?
We check the flop?
No, no, on the turn. And have him bet sixteen, sure. So I'm guessing like obviously A sex calls. Jackson tense fully makes sense. Like we just play call fold. Makes some sense. And then on the river, like I just wanna see like where these like. Like, it's just like in reality, like the humans has to turn like. Oh, I just wanna see where they're turning their blush from. So actually, let's go back to the hand before you look it up. So what's the value range for the hijack and what's the? Bluff range, like what's the worst hand you think the hijack value best?
We're, we're smoked by the value range, like it's not good, like he's not, he's not just blasting off with Ace ten here, you know?
What you're saying, Matt, is if the river was a deuce, it would be a lot easier to call because it's a lot easier for him to find bloods, whereas a queen completes a lot of stuff. So it's easier to win that value.
This stuff, this spot, it's a little different cuz like the queen doesn't really complete anything.
Okay.
Uh, it's more so like. The flop is very dry, so like a lot of people are folding Queen Jack of Hearts on the flop and stuff, so it's like basically like five, six suited. And then like all the bluffs have to come from like pairs here, so like the bluffs on this river, I think have to come from. Eight, seven suited, five, four suited, obviously like six, five suited.
Diamonds, right?
Like nine X.
Mostly Diamonds or?
Like Diamonds need a bluff, yeah, like Diamonds were bluffing the hijack some, but like they're not gonna have. So like it's really difficult for a lot of like humans to find those bluffs, cuz there's not really natural bluffs, this, this is like a similar spot where it's just. Because the ranges have gotten. So tight and there's just not a lot of natural floats.
And he can have any two pairs.
And then like, I don't even know, like.
Can he have like pocket tens?
Like.
Ace four suited might be the bottom.
Inposition probably jam, the imposition probably has some Ace King for sure. Um, like I don't know if imposition, what imposition does with Ace Jack, like. What does imposition do with Ace Jack? Can you go back to the river here? So. Um, can you? Put it so it's, so Ace Jack's like.
Bluffing.
Indifferent based off like. Yeah, but like it's not worth like a ton, like.
It really, really wants to bluff the Diamonds. Well, it's a value that.
It's value.
But if you look at like the EV of like, if you look at like the EV of like. All in and check, it's like very, very, very little, like point three into a pot of sixty-eight. Like it's very thin. Um. Versus go to Ace like Queen, for example. Like the EV between check and all in is massive.
Yeah.
Look at Ace King, like I'm, I'm curious just how thin the value like, Ace King, like you see like there's a different decent amount of EV and all in versus check, there's even a lot of EV, so like Ace Jack is like, that's why I was saying Ace Jack, I didn't know. Like, can you?
Well.
Um, go to the filters, I wanna see like how often they actually have these sets, like.
It al, it also gets a little more interesting, like you were talking about like if the field is ICM adjusted at all, like that Ace Jack is gonna behave differently, right?
Yeah, like it'd probably, it'd be pure check for a hundred percent, um, so like it's a lot of sets and it's a lot of two pair. So like, that's not a sprain, there's not much top pair here in the value range, but like, so where, like if you look at where the bluffs come from, it's like. Um. So it's Jack ten suited. Ten eight suited, six, five suited. So like they had to have called the flop with ten eight suited, which like I would have, but I don't know if a lot of people would like. I don't know if I call Jack ten suited enough here on the flop. Like I would have found ten eight before that, like. Um, and then go to the low pairs, like it's gotta be like. Seven, six, fives, threes. So it's like these are all bluffs that potentially like they could have zero percent of them.
Yeah, they're not supposed to continue very much against them.
Like people might fold deuces and threes on the flop, they might fold fives and sixes on the flop, they might fold ten eight suited and Jack ten suited on the flop, it's like the only real natural bluff that's like. Everyone probably has a hundred percent of the time is like. Six, five suited. Right?
Yeah, because it's.
Yeah.
Because of a.
And like, what, like go all in. Like. Ace King's gonna be a call here because they have Ace Jack some, like, but like the EV, like, so the EV of that's gonna be like, but go to Ace Jack, like. It's like, I think there was some Ace ten suited, maybe that was shoving a little bit like.
So they're not bluffing enough, so the, the calls on the river are not good.
Like there's like a lot of people I might like feel comfortable, like just check fold in a hundred percent here. But against people like that, that. I also like to bluff this spot a lot. I go kinda crazy here with like. Some of these like seven sixes and stuff like, I'm bluffing like seven six suited like on the river here, decent amount, I have time for like one.
One more or should we knock it out there? One more?
Sure, one more.
So I like betting small here cuz we have the Ace of Spades.
Think there's probably some big bet here, like Queens and Kings wanna bet big, like bet eleven, but like bet five is fine. They're both fine.
Bet eleven?
Are we betting everything here, can you go back, can we go to the flop?
I think, I think we're betting Ranger, yeah, Jack Eye boards are really, really good, we're betting anything.
Been quite often, yeah, like there's not a lot of checking, there's a little bit with like pocket eights, that makes sense, pocket sevens, that makes sense, seven, six suited, six, five suited, makes sense. Guys in seven, six and six, five only bet with hearts and spades, is that true?
Yeah.
Pretty much. Eight, seven's a different hand.
Wanna see something else, sir?
No, no.
Hmm, I think uh, the deuce is. Just gone to not change our betting strategy too much, I think we probably double barrel with this just because. You know.
I would borrow any high card here, but not a deuce.
Yeah, I'm checking.
Um, I think this is the hand of.
It just drops the frequency a little.
I'm gonna barrel this for sure.
I think this is the hand to bet. Uh, actually, yeah, wait, 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 I think it's better to barrel with like the Queen of Spades or the King of Spades. Cuz they, you wanna kinda unblock all their singles, Ace High Spades.
You know what, actually having a ten here is kind of bad to like.
We block some of the floats and stuff, but like, we do block calls like Queen ten, King ten, like those hands aren't folding, so. This is actually kinda tough, um, it's probably better to barrel here with Ace ten with a ten of spades than Ace ten with the Ace of Spades.
I see, I think it's better to barrel with the Ace.
The problem is now is you block all the Ace of Spades, Queen, Ace of Spades, King, Ace of Spades, ten. Guess there's not that many offsuit A six.
Which are gonna continue against your bet, so you're kind of like.
No, those tens are folding the turn.
Okay. Ace five of spades is folding, no?
No, I, I was saying Ace of Spades, like offsuit hands, I was saying.
Okay, okay.
I was referring to like. So yeah, it's probably better to have the Ace of Spades, um.
I thi, I think I still bet here in game.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would probably lean towards betting, but.
Have a check on a deuce brick and then let's see if the spade is good or not.
I think it's gonna be like Ace ten with the Ace of Spades, it's gonna be particularly bad.
It wants to have the, yeah, so I was kinda, the ten of spades is better. Like you just wanna unblock the high card spade floats.
Now you're gonna bluff spade rivers, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And we are still just kinda betting a lot of, fed a low.
Too quick, you're going way too quick in this stuff. Uh. Just trying to like. I was wondering if we had any jams, but we don't, I thought maybe like. King Queen with the King of Spades.
You see a little color out of Jack ten there, like it's a little bit, but not really, right?
No, I mean, there's point four, whatever, Ace Jack would have been the hand to do away.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
You go to the report, the turn strategy across sports. Yeah.
So the hearts are really introducing some big size.
Yeah, so just Ace King Queens, where could we fold out those hands? Well, it's like the deuce is the fourth best card, like the deuce is better than like the ten.
Mm-hmm.
And all those types of hands, like the deuce is not necessarily like.
That break.
Like those are pretty good cards, so it's more the middling cards like the. You know, the Jack, the nine.
I guess I underestimated the deuce because he is gonna have like some wheelie aces that are gonna stick around now, but um. I don't know.
No, I mean, there's only two combinations, it's only, it has to be spades and hearts. It's, it's just like you're just trying to fold out all the weak hands that didn't improve.
Right, so that makes having a ten kind of. Bad.
So the hur, heuristic I've learned today is as the turn aggressor, when we get the brick, we still barrel a lot of the same hands at a slightly lower frequency. It seems like.
Yeah, it's probably like somewhat reasonable, it's like we, both players have a lot of trash that didn't improve, so.
I think this, say we check turn and we face.
I'm, I'm gonna release.
Advantage.
Okay, uh, okay. All right, well, thanks a lot, Matt, it was a really, really great session. What are you laughing at?
Cuz you didn't, you, you cut him off, didn't let him look at the river.
Yeah, it's all good.
Yeah.
I was just looking at what, like on the turn, what we were actually continuing with.
Okay, um.
So like. If I had a suggestion with you guys, for you guys, I would say we're like, we're going through these drills, which I think are really, really valuable, it's focused just on like. Do I understand the overall strategy? Reasonably well. Like that's like basically what your goal is. And so like more so than like what you do with the hand, just try to guess first before you even say what you do with your hand, and this is how I play poker too. I, I always say, what is my overall strategy look like here? Like how much raising do I wanna do, how much calling do I wanna do, like et cetera, those, that type of stuff. And just, you know, check it to make sure that like you are. You know, um, very like that you're. Have a reasonable idea of the overall strategy, if you don't, that's like an area to study, so like when you're doing these drills, it's more also about like. Identifying areas to study more in depth. Rather than, um, sometimes that's more valuable than getting it right, the other thing that I think is really, really important when you're doing these is. When you get like answers from it where it's like fold this hand, um. Look at very similar hands cuz you get a lot of noise sometimes and like it's really hard to know where people are bluffing, so we had like the nine, six versus nine, seven. Earlier with like on nine, five, three deuce and. Like nine, six called, nine, seven raised some, but like. Look at similar hands to see and like same with like bluff catchers and stuff like that, like look at very similar hands to see if there's like noise going on, cuz a lot of times there's a lot of noise. And, um. You know, if it's picking one combo and then not picking the other combo type of stuff, like be kind of cautious. And like. Looking um, for that type of stuff. If that makes sense.
It, it sure does.
It does, Matt, uh.
Like, don't worry, don't worry if like. You said raise King eight and it raises King nine and calls with King eight, like it's not like, that's not like what you should be worried about, like it's. What's our general, like, and think about like blocks, like. How do we play our top pair hands here? You know, how do we play this type of hand class here, like that's the, like the real type of stuff that you wanna really be focusing on.
Awesome.
Hey, thanks a lot, Matt. Yeah, I really appreciate you taking your time out today and uh, coming to our study session.
We all do.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Matt.
Yep, alright, have a good one, guys.
Good luck out there, Matt.
Thank you.